Welcome to our Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 Special Voting Meeting of Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Please note that the Board met for an executive session on Thursday, March 30th to discuss personnel and security. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its whole with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, can you take roll call, please?
Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler? Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mel?
Here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter?
Here.
Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the eight board members attending this evening, we're also joined at the Board Table by our Solicitor Sharon Montine and members of the School District Administration, including Dr. Kristi Howlett Superintendent, Dwayne Harris Assistant Superintendent, Diane Guinavaki Director of Human Resources, and Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. We will not be amending the agenda tonight, so we'll be right into Dr. Howlett's Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. I would just like to share this evening that it's my belief that we are very lucky here in Exeter, very grateful for all the wonderful things that have been happening. Our winter sports teams and individuals did a great job this past season, and it ended with our basketball team going to seats where they did a very fantastic job against a very tough opponent, and it's the first time that we have gotten that far since, I believe, 1974. And so I thought that our students handled themselves with a lot of integrity. They showed strong sportsmanship, and I believe that we couldn't be prouder of them. And then just this past week, we had a great production of Matilda. I actually brought the program. As I was looking through it after the show, I had an opportunity to notice that a lot of our students from the high school were actually involved in the production with building of sets, which I thought was extremely impressive. But the production itself was first rate. The students did an amazing job. There was a number of familiar names. If you didn't know that it was students, I don't think that you would actually know. And the set design itself was amazing, and I believe that a lot of that was led with by Mr. Rag, who if he knew that I was highlighting him right now, he would not be pleased. So again, just a great, great couple of months here in Exeter, and I'm looking for a strong wrap-up for the end of the year. And I believe that it already started with our baseball team beating Wilson yesterday. We tend run them, so that was a, that was a strong finish for us. So congratulations to all of our athletes and our musical department as well. At this time, before I turn it back over to Dr. Herring, I'd like to turn it over to our School District Solicitor Sharon Montine, who is going to be reading a statement on behalf of the School District and the Board of Directors.
Good evening, everybody. This has to do with public feedback. Section 7, 10.1 of the Sunshine Law requires that residents of a public school district be permitted to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before the Board prior to the Board taking official action. Your School Board Policy 903 expressly provides for two comment periods. The first comment period, in compliance with the Sunshine Law, is reserved for comments about voting items on the agenda. The second comment period is for any topic a member of the community wishes to raise with the School Board of Directors. The Board wishes to make clear that making personal attacks against fellow members of the community or addressing non-agenda items during an agenda-only comment period is in violation of the Board policy and it is not condoned by this governing body. The Board asks that our fellow community members adhere to the stated requirements so that the business of the School Board can be conducted in an orderly and respectful manner. The Board has also received a written complaint from a community member accusing the School District of having a business relationship with another member of the community who engages in local media broadcasting activities. The Board wants the public to understand that the School District has no, no business, contractual, or financial relationships with any media outlets that publish or broadcast school or school-related events, none. Neither the Board, the Administration, nor the School District endorse or pay any media outlets that operate in the Exeter geographic area. The District does not have the ability to stop individuals and area businesses from creating fictitious titles and names that reference the School District or from attending public events. The District also has no ability to control comments that private individuals may post, tweet, or broadcast about other members of the community. As sometimes disrespectful and offensive as some of it may be, the School Board, as a government body, cannot and should not attempt to censor or control speech from other private persons. The Board wanted everybody to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Montine. Appreciate that. We would next go to public comment, but no one has signed up, so we're going to go to Personnel Committee, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Dr. Herring. At this time, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the following resignations under Support Staff A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following retirements. Support Staff A and B. Just want to thank Mr. Kissinger and Ms. Eber for their continued service to our School District through their retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following appointments under Administrative Staff. Item A, Joshua Hoyt for Director of Teaching and Learning, an act 93 position with an annual salary of $130,000, paraded with a start date to be determined.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following appointments. Support Staff Items A and B, Extracurricular Staff A and B, Guest Teachers A, Food Service Staff Substitutes, Item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
If I could just take a moment and recognize Dr. Hoyt, who is here with us this evening, and welcome him to the Exeter Township School District. We're thrilled to have you here as a member of our staff, and also, he's also a parent in the district. His wife Bryn is here with him tonight. And yes, I am going to embarrass Jason Addy, who are both here in the audience, a junior high student and one of our Watten Creek students. So thank you, Dr. Hoyt and his family, for being here. Welcome.
Okay, Item C, under D Change of, I'm sorry, under D Change of Status. Support Staff Item A is up for discussion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say.
Oh, sorry, this was just a discussion item.
It's just a discussion. It's not listed as.
Thank you. Sorry, that was my fault.
No, it's okay. It's not listed as a voting item, so I just wanted to bring this up if anyone wants to discuss. Enough for discussion as well. Under E Leave of Absence, any discussion? So Items D and E would then move to the next voting meeting, I assume, based on the wording in?
Yeah, I believe these should have been on the Cal.
Not the Leave of Abences, but the Change of Status should have been.
Should have been on the Cal.
Mm-hmm.
So do we move these to the next discussion session under Personnel?
You can. Yeah.
Yeah, amend the Cal to add these.
Amen the Cal to add, yeah, add these, and then you did vote on B, B, A and B.
Oh, they were actually voting meetings.
No, but they said it says discussions.
Um, it's, oh, yeah. B was discussion, which.
It's fine. All of the ones that say discussion, you just move to the Cal, and then you'll vote on the next voting meeting.
Yep.
As well, yeah.
So just to, so just for clarification, should we rescind the vote that happened on Item B?
The retirements?
Yeah.
I guess.
Just as a formality.
It's a formality, yes.
Julie, do you want to make that motion?
Make a motion.
Yep, I'll make a motion to rescind the vote on Item B, retirements for Support Staff A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on that.
We should have put vote on rescinding.
All in favor to rescind, say aye.
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 No abstentions? It, oops. So again, for clarification, please. 5B, 5D, and 5E as well are all being moved to the Cal, correct?
B, D, and E, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. All set, Mrs. Schaefer?
Just a point of clarification, do we need to rescind any of the appointments other than Administrative Staff or Mr. Dr. Hoyt, given these were not discussed at a Cal?
Uh, no.
No, okay, no.
Yeah, these were all action items, we're okay with them.
Okay. Just want to make clarification.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So that is it for the Personnel Committee, Dr. Herring.
Okay. Finance, Facilities, and Budget, Mr. Mel.
Yes, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the attached 2023-2024 Berks County Intermediate Unit Mandated Services Budget.
This has to be a roll call vote.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Feig, can you take roll call? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, can we have a discussion on that? Do we need a discussion?
Question. What exactly are mandated services as used in this context? I know what the word mandated means, but who's doing the mandating here?
I can, I can actually answer that if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the IU, the IU's budget is made up of several components. The mandated portion is the contributory portion from all of the sending or participating school districts in that IU. There are other pieces of an IU budget that they run and operate that are not part of that group effort. They may be individualized services that they, that they sell effectively to, you know, a subset of its constituents. Those are not part of this mandated budget. And so you're only voting on the collective portion of the IU's required budget.
Okay, but who, who, who's the actor here? Who's doing the mandating? Is it the intermediate unit? Are they saying to us, you have to take these?
The services of the IU, certain of them are delegated to the IU by the Department of Education, primarily funneling of funds through the IU for certain purposes accomplished by all, all school districts. It used to go way back when, when we had a county school director, it used to go through his office, but then when the IU's were formed, it was switched over to the IU. So it's basically money funding for specific mandated purposes.
I still don't know who's doing them. Is it the Department of Education that's doing? They're saying to, what, the IU and to all participating districts, you must buy these services?
No, no. What they're saying is.
Well, that's what mandated means.
The IU is, is, is an entity that is created by PDE.
Right.
To do collective, provide collective services to its county school districts. The IU actually, there are certain activities, like low incidence, high expense, special education programs, things like that, that the IU does collectively for all its sending school districts. So I don't know if you want to say that's a PDE mandate. It is a mandate that these services be required, be provided. The IU is the collective agency that does that. There are services that the IU's, and there are IU's are all different throughout the state, that they sort of come up with and provide because their sending districts have asked for them to provide that. So trainings and different things like that. That is not PDE telling the IU, you have to do this. This is effectively the sending school district saying, we would like this service, can be created.
And so those services aren't mandated.
They're not mandated, but they're in this portion of the budget because it's, it's a collective, you know, request.
Sounds like we need a new word, but I'm not gonna.
Yeah, it's not the best word, you're right. Other, other IU's will call it the Programs and Services Budget, or, you know, so you don't have to use that word, but if that's the word that Berks County uses, so be it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fiddler, an example of something that wouldn't be included in a mandated budget would be like our BCIU childcare. So they're not, that's not part of this budget. That's something that they do to create, you know.
Because the need exists throughout the county.
Right, because the need exists within the county, but wouldn't be a part of this.
Okay.
Sometimes not examples are as helpful as examples for me, so.
Yes, you should be right. Yeah.
The naming is, a major portion of the IU budget covers state mandated services. I think that's probably where the mandated portion.
Okay, thank you all.
Dr. Hamburger, just as a point of clarification, the number that's on here, that, my understanding, is not what the School District is on the hook for. That is their budget, correct? So they're not asking this, I just like to clarify that for the taxpayers, that they're not asking for 1.9 million dollars from the School District.
No, that's total budget, and I, I don't know, it would be nice to see the actual amount on this, on this motion, but I'd, we're like 1/18 of it.
Right.
Well, actually, it's divided.
It's about 46,000.
There, there is a total listed there. Are you talking about the total?
The total list is 46,986.15.
Right. What you're happening is you're approving the budget as a collective because all the sending districts have to vote, you know, because you're also the Board of Directors.
Correct. I'd just like to remind the public that when they look at the, when they look at this and they see 1.9 million dollars, that that is not our contribution as a district.
I think, if I recall correctly, Mr. Morgan, I did what you just did last year, just to make sure everybody.
Well, we'll just make sure somebody else does it next year.
We'll let you, Julie, do it next year. Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Feig.
Dr. Andrea Battler, absent. Robert Quinter? Jason Mel?
Yes.
Dr. David R. Hamburger?
Yes.
John T. Fiddler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann M. Herring?
Yes.
Allison A. Wilson?
Yes.
Timothy S. Morgan?
Yes.
Julia J. Schaefer?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no, one absent. I'm just reading the way they wrote.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Dr. Herring, that's it for my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Next would be public comment. No one has signed up, so if there is no objection, the special voting meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hoyt, Dr. Hoyt?
You can't object, you're already hired.
So I, I should have signed in. I just wanted to take a, just a little bit of time to say thank you from the Board of Directors and the Administration for, for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to thank my family, my wife Bryn and Jason Addison for supporting me with this. This is truly a dream come true for me as an Exeter resident, parent, and somebody who's been in the school system for almost 20 years now, so you will, I promise you, you'll get the very best from me. I cannot wait to get started. I'd like to thank the Intermediate Unit for their support and training with them the last couple of years, as well as my experiences with OJ Roberts School District and Twin Valley School District. They've all helped to shape me to get to this point, and this is truly, truly a dream come true for me. So anything that I can do to support the students, the parents, the community members, the Board, the Administration, I will certainly do, but I am honestly counting the minutes that I can get started here, and I look forward to a really wonderful relationship with all of you moving forward. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Hoyt, and welcome to the family. If there are no further objections, the special voting meeting is adjourned, and we'll now begin with our Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 Exeter Township School District Committee of a Whole meeting. Mr. Feig, do you want to take roll call again? Can you? Do you mind? Should we? Mine is.
I don't have a white sheet. Dr. Ann Herring?
Present.
John Fiddler?
Here.
Dr. Andrea Battler? Dr. David Hamburger?
Here.
Jason Mel?
Here.
Timothy Morgan?
Here.
Robert Quinter?
Here.
Julia Schaefer?
Here.
Allison Wilson?
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Mr. Feig. The meeting minutes are attached. Does anyone have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes from March 7th, 2023 Board Committee of a Whole, and March 21st, 2023 Board Voting Meeting?
Dr. Herring, there are two corrections. I had a request that be made, page 11, first line, changing the word from complaints to compliments, and also on page 30. Was it March 7th? March 7th? What? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, that was for the March 21st Voting Meeting Minutes, yes. Page, page 30, prior to the start of Section 10, at the end of the permitted devices policy, the, we did not capture the actual vote to accept the policy, so there were some modifications needed there. I believe that those changes have been reflected in the updated minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mel. Next, we have a presentation of a donation. Dr. Howlett?
So Courtney Epler was not able to be here with us this evening, but we wanted to publicly thank Giant Foods Stores for a donation that they made for a little over $7,000 to our school district. Mr. Fiddler was able to be there two weeks ago when they presented the check to us. If you go to Giant on a regular basis, you probably have noticed that when you go to pay, that they ask you if you want to round up the amount that you're paying, and you're probably wondering, like, what really happens to that money? Well, school districts really do get that money, so, and we received it in the form of a check of $7,000. So now you're probably asking, well, what are you going to do with that money? Which is a very fair question. So we, as an administration, felt that it was very important to continue to find ways to support our students. For the last couple of years during COVID, breakfast and lunch were free, and that's no longer the case anymore. We've caught, we've kind of gone back to what it was pre-COVID, and so we do have students that, because of hardship, do have balances to, to their lunch, and of course, we, we never turn a child away. All of our students are served lunch, but we still have a responsibility to pay for those lunches in some way. So that money will be used to pay off the, the lunch accounts of, of students and families who are, are not able to afford to pay for their lunches.
Dr. Howlett, could I ask a question, just in terms of the account balances? There was a community member that had reached out to me prior, asking about how they could personally contribute or donate money. Do you, do you happen to know who the community could speak to in order to make a donation to the account balances?
So periodically, we'll have community members reach out, and their support is always very great, great, we're grateful for their support. You just need to contact our Food Services Department directly, either Ms. Tracy Les or Mrs. Courtney Epler, and they will help you with that. Some of our community members ask that the money go directly to a family that they know of, and they just want to remain anonymous if they know that the family's experiencing hardship, or because they attended one of the elementary schools, they would prefer that the money go to one of the elementary schools. So if they have something specific in mind, we will certainly honor that. Otherwise, if they just want to make a general donation, then we'll just add it to reducing the, the amount of the, the lunches that we haven't been able to recoup the money for.
Thank you.
I've got a question, Dr. Howlett. Do you know how much of a dent the 7,000 from Giant will make in collective outstanding balances?
I believe that it actually covers the entire amount that has been accumulated thus far this year, and there is actually, I believe, some money that will be left over that will be applied, and we're still, you know, in, you know, beginning of April, but it will be applied for the rest of the year and then carried over if there's any beginning of next year.
Thank you.
Do you want to add to that?
No, the only thing I wanted to add is the state did make breakfast free, but not lunch free this year, you know? So that did help in a lot of, we have a lot more participation. When everything was free last year, we had a lot more participation in the lunch program too. But as Dr. Howlett said, we do not turn anyone away, and what we do find is, you know, it's hard, but we, if they need additional lunches and stuff like that, that's where we tap these funds, because there's certain students that might, one meal might not fill them up, and the state, if they are under free, reduces, the state only pays for one meal.
In the past, we had the same policy for the participation fee and other fees that we charge for students, that if they were in fact from a family in need or could not afford that, we absorbed the costs. Does that still continue?
They still have applications for the student activity fees, and that's handled on a billing level.
That's actually something that our School District Social Worker helps a great deal with too, is coordinating some of that for families that need that extra financial support.
If no further discussion, we'll move on to the 2023-24 Budget Update by Dr. Howlett and Mr. Feig.
So you're probably tired of me standing at this podium, giving budget updates, but I do think it's very important that the public here, where we are in the process of the budget, as the Board knows, this is a very long process and very complicated, so we like to make sure that it is, is chunked, and we're continuing with our, our building tours, with the last one being, coming up in April this month. And Joe, the clicker is not working. Oh, there we go. I was too fast for it. There we go. The last one being here, being at the new Transportation Center on April 26. I would hope that members of the community would come out and get a tour of our new Transportation Center, and at that time, we will be talking about budget challenges and changes, because the budget's not finalized until the Board votes on it, and they have till June 30th. the board votes on it, and they have till June thirtieth to do that, and that's by law. These are just the workshops that we've had to date, and if you would like an opportunity to review some of the things that have already been discussed, there is a whole page, a whole portion of our website dedicated to this that you can find right on the top of the page, and you can see each of the meetings that we had with the minutes and a copy of the presentation for you to review. Just a reminder of the timeline, we, all school districts are required to follow a very specific timeline, and as we've been sharing at each of these meetings, we are still on target to meeting all of the the timeframes that have been allocated to school districts for the process of the budget. So as we keep reminding everyone, where does the revenue that a school district use come from? And based on the twenty-two, twenty-three revenue, you can see that sixty-seven percent of the school district's operating expenses come from local revenue, and that is essentially our taxpayers that that money comes from. Thirty percent last year came from state revenue and grants, and three percent came from federal revenue and grants. And you can see on that slide exactly what that equates to as far as the actual dollar, dollar amount. At the top, you'll see that it says estimated for the twenty-three, twenty-four revenue, because that is certainly one of the challenges that not only Exeter faces, but all school districts face, because you really don't know until you know, because the state does not pass their budget till the, around the same time as the school district. So the governor gave a proposed budget in March, but it hasn't been voted on yet, so at this time, all the, all the numbers that Brian has put into the budget, many of them are estimated, and as the budget process moves further along during the many months, some of those numbers start to firm up, such as PESR's contribution, special education costs, healthcare benefits, and of course, what does the state effort and the federal effort going to look like? So at this time, you can see that sixty-eight percent is coming from local revenue. We anticipate that the state will continue to come in at approximately thirty percent, but the federal government, the federal contribution is coming in at approximately two percent. And I just want to highlight that change from the previous year to this year with the sixty-eight percent of the local revenue, because that is not increasing because of an increase in taxes. It's actually increased because of interest that the district has received in our investments, and I'm I'm going to turn it over to Brian at this time, so that way he can explain a little bit more, because it is, it is a nice increase that we've seen.
Before, before you start, Brian, excuse me, just for the uninitiated, if someone's at home, doesn't know what all the acronyms are, what is PESR's?
PESR's is the retirement system, that, the pension for-
And Spanish School Employee Retirement System.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention is the two percent of federal revenue, that actually goes down again next year, because the last couple of years, we've been spending down the ESER or the federal COVID money. We've been spending it on one-off, so it's not going to affect when it drops off, or we're not going to fall off a cliff. We're just not going to have those programs, like the previous year, we had a whole summer school program, which we kept the school open. We bought one-to-one on laptops all the way down through kindergarten, different things that, you know, that we do not have to continue doing every single year. So a little bit of the federal revenue drop was because of the COVID money dropping, and this will be our last, this coming budget will be last year for ESER three. So that'll drop again. So besides the increase in revenues on local or interest earnings, I think last month, I gave you an example of the February interest earnings, which were over a hundred fifty thousand, compared to the same time last year was less than a thousand, and that's net of bank fees. So the previous year, at this time last year, I think we were at point one percent for the best rate, and now we're at four and a half percent for the best rate on interest, so it's one positive of inflation, if you want to call it that. State revenue and grants, when I computed what the state has given us, they gave us, and we'll see it further down the road, what they're projecting in the governor's budget, in my budget, I took the same percentage of what we got last year. The governor projected an eighteen percent increase, we got a seven or eight percent, so I use that same percentage. Compared to last year, I did not use the full amount, because I know and you know that once the politicians get through their debates, it's not going to be a hundred percent of what the governor asked for, but I think it'll at least be the inflation rate, so we're around a four, four and a half percent increase now budgeting for instead of the ten percent that he says we're getting, or wants us to get. If you want, anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Great job, Brian.
Where are the transfer fees on the real estate included in that? Is that under local?
Yeah, that's under local. I did decrease that from this past year, but I'm still seeing a strong transfer, not like we had last year, but we're still seeing new properties coming on. I think this past month, there's fourteen or fifteen new construction properties that were assessed and put on the market, and another, you know, eighty or ninety sales, which, you know, last year at this time was probably two or three hundred sales in a month. So it's, you know, last year, we had a phenomenal, it was highest prior to last ten years, transfer taxes, but it's still, it's still solid, but not like it was, you know?
To those that don't remember from when they bought their home, in addition to your state, local, and county taxes, there's a transfer fee, which is two percent of the sale price of the home. Half of that stays local and half of it goes to the state, so when you think of a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you're looking at, what, two hundred fifty, two, two hundred fifty dollars, no, two thousand five hundred dollars that comes to the local municipal and school board from that sale.
We split that with the township.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thirty percent of our budget comes from the state. So what the governor's proposing does have a significant impact on not just Exeter, but other school districts. So what does that look like? And this is just a glimpse of what was proposed, not actually what we will receive, because it's not, it's not been approved yet. So there is some new funding that has been proposed. There is funding that is, they're proposing for school-based mental health. We're not really quite sure what that means yet, or they're saying over five-year period, we're not sure if that's the same amount over five years. We haven't gotten more, really more information on that, but you'll see that we are allocated, or it's proposed that we would receive up to a hundred forty-one thousand dollars. If you go on to this presentation, after it gets posted on our district website with all the other budget information, you'll be able to click on that link, and you'll be able to see not just Exeter's allocation, but the allocation for the other districts in Berks County as well, so you can see where we compare. The other new funding that's being proposed is environmental repairs, repairs and upgrades, and again, they're proposing approximately a hundred million dollars for that. This is not an allocation where a district is just going to get that money, that's actually going to be a grant process, and the first thing I did when I saw that was, Brian, we better make sure that we apply for that grant. And I'll let you share what you said to me, and-
And what I said is, there's only thing we might be able to qualify is remediation of the mastic and the junior high auditorium flooring, because it's, it's really made for, you know, inner-city schools or places where they stop lead in their pipes or asbestos in their buildings and things like that, it's an environmental repair, it's an upgrade grant. So I will be applying for the flooring in the junior high. We don't have the friable type that goes in here, but if we replace the floor, the mastic, which is a glue, has asbestos in it, and that has to be disposed of, and that would qualify for this grant, so we won't be applying, but we won't get a lot.
So if that, if that new funding comes through, that will be something that we will keep you informed about our progress with that, if we're eligible to apply for that grant, and of course, if we receive it. So some of the other highlights that were proposed is funding increases, and so we have the basic education, and we are, it looks like we would receive approximately eleven million dollars, a little over eleven million dollars, but as Brian shared with you, we are not necessarily anticipating receiving that much, so that amount is, is not, we're not completely clear on that, and we won't be until the governor's budget passes. And again, if you have an opportunity to look at that, link to that spreadsheet, you'll see again what Exeter is receiving in comparison to the other school districts in Berks County. Special education, which we have another slide on a little later in the presentation. Again, they're proposing that we would receive over three million dollars, and again, if you would click on that link when you have an opportunity to look at that presentation, you'll see where we compare to other school districts. There's also funding increases in there for pre-K counts, which at this time, we do not have our own pre-K, but we do house a pre-K program that's ran through the BCIU, and there is an increase for the career and technical education. Funding increases continued, early intervention, again, that would not specifically impact us, but moving down to the plan con reimbursement, that's something that was instituted a number of years ago, and Exeter currently is receiving reimbursement, and it's actually from the Awatton Creek, the building of the Awatton Creek School. A number of years ago, that school is already about, I think, eleven or twelve years old. So we do receive a reimbursement for that project, but that reimbursement is, is being phased out. So school districts that were eligible for it and applied for it and are receiving their funds will continue to receive their funds until they're, it's, it's paid out, but at, at this time, it's only for funding those projects. It's not necessary, it's not new money that we can apply for. We are anxious to see what the teacher professional development looks like, and what, if any increases Exeter would be eligible for, if that's a grant process. And then, of course, you'll see that there's more for career and technical education, as well as a head start. So the level funding, that's not going up or necessarily going down, it's, it's staying somewhat level, and we have a school and, school safety and security fund, we're not sure what that would look like for Exeter. The non-public doesn't apply to us, and we're not quite sure what that means as far as the safe school initiative. And again, all of these are very exciting, and we're grateful to the governor for proposing this budget. We are very anxious to see how this is worked out, and how much funding the school district actually does receive. Areas where we believe there are going to be funding decreases, as proposed by the governor's budget, is the Ready to Learn Grant. However, when we looked back, it does not look like Exeter will be impacted by that based on the number that we were given, which is a little over five hundred forty-two thousand dollars. And again, if you click on that link, when you have time to look into the presentation, you'll see where we are in compared to other district and funding. And then there is a decrease for pupil transportation, which again, we do believe could potentially have an impact on us. And at this time, I'm going to have Brian expand upon the way that the, the allocation we receive for transportation works.
Yeah, well, first of all, I do have a decrease in the projected funding for our pupil transportation, just based on our age of the fleet, because the older your fleet gets, they'll, they're formula, you get a hundred percent up to ten years, and then from ten to fifteen years, it starts decreasing on what you can get. We have several vehicles that dropped into the ten to fifteen-year range. So with the decrease of the one point six percent, and our vehicles, I think we're roughly around a hundred ten thousand less we'll receive in transportation funding next year, and part of that is we have not gotten our new buses that we ordered last year. Latest I've heard, it's possibly September of twenty-three. So there's buses that are, once you hit fifteen years, if we hit fifteen years, there's no funding for those vehicles. So we try to use the newer buses on all of our regular runs, and the older buses on, you know, they're still good shape, but we don't get reimbursement. You know, we can use those for transportation on athletics and stuff, which we don't get reimbursed on.
Mr. Feig, what's the breakdown between the number of leased buses versus the ones we own? Is it just the, the leased ones were just the ones from the past budget?
From the past budget and two budgets before, so I think we're up to five, and they're, and they're leased to purchase, so.
They are leased to purchase, okay.
Yeah, at the end of five years, a dollar we own them, so it's leased to purchase.
Thank you.
They call it a capital lease that way.
So as we have said, the expenditures are a work in progress, because we are not sure what the governor's budget really is going to mean for Exeter at this time. We did update the numbers based on the vote at the last meeting regarding the restructuring. So at this time, you can just see as a reminder where we currently are with the budget, the percentages of each of the salaries, benefits, professional services, and the other items that have been outlined at that time, so we're coming in at a little bit above eighty-three million dollars. As we've talked about before, some of the notable increases that we've seen is the leasing of buses, contractual increases as far as salary and benefits, supplies, and as Brian has shared multiple times, supplies, oftentimes people think, well, that's paper, but it really is, that's not what goes into that, that function. It's our electricity plus cleaning products and fuel and other items such as that. We have building maintenance contracts that were required to upkeep, and so again, we've seen notable increases in those contracts. So some of the other items that do have an impact on the budget is, of course, our special education program. And so we broke it out as to what we receive as far as a federal allocation, state allocation, and then ultimately what the district contribution is, and you can see going back into the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and then working your way up, that the amount that we receive from the federal government is essentially flat. And you can see that there is an asterisk under twenty-three, twenty-four, both at federal and state level, because again, that is a, an estimate anticipated based on an assumption that business managers, Brian, would need to make, because we don't have, we don't have accurate numbers at this time, because this, the state and federal government does not provide them to us during this process. And then the district contribution, you can see, is well over fourteen million dollars. So the total cost of our special education program is eighteen million dollars, and a limited amount of it is supported by state and federal dollars. This clicker is not working with me. So cyber charter schools, when we talk about unfunded mandates, this was one that we had talked about several meetings ago, and you can see that the federal allocation, state allocation to support cyber charter schools is, is zero. So that million plus a price tag is completely assumed by district budgets, and you can see at the bottom what we put as the cost of a per pupil cost for a regular education student and special education student, and I think it's important to remind the community that when we say cyber- And I think it's important to remind the community that when we say cyber charter school. That they are not a brick and mortar school, so they do not have the same upkeep costs as we do in a in a school district. And I I believe that Brian had a couple of things that he wanted to explain about that per pupil cost.
Yeah, so the per pupil cost is based on our total budget less all the federal's programs that we spend. So it's it's roughly about fifty-five, fifty-six million and divides it by the number of students that are either in regular ed or special ed. You know, I think cyber charters are here to stay. The problem I see with cybers and our state association is fighting is they're never on the same playing field. They don't get audited like we do, they don't follow the rules like we do. They get tuition based on every district's tuition rate. So our our regular education rate is twelve thousand seven thirty-five. Readings might be fifteen thousand, Williamsport might be seventy-five hundred per student. So wherever the student comes from, that's what the rate they get. So if you find they they actually advertise more in the cities than higher areas, because they can make more money off those students. But every student at cyber charter schools getting the same education. So we feel there should be some flat rate that they would get, especially if you look at our special ed's per pupil. That's based on what it cost us per pupil less the 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 federal programs. How can you, there's a lot of things you can't do cyber for special ed students. And most of this, you know, I hate to say most of the students in cyber or speech therapy, things like that, that they only require two hours a week. But they get the same rate that we we get charged. But if you go into like Philadelphia's special ed rate is, you know, I think in the forty thousand per student. So, you know, they they, I don't want to say pray, but they they look at the higher paying districts. When they they try to pull their students in. I don't think cyber is gonna going away. Arts or population that we pay out for cyber hasn't increased, a lot of districts have. A lot of districts lost lost students during COVID and didn't get back, because once they got in that system, they they didn't want to come back. We have had our own cyber academy, which I think has really stemmed the outflow. You know, they do have their place, because a lot of students do not like the the rigor that we we make for all of our students payoffs. And they also don't like the hours where in cyber you can set your own timeframes. So you won't have choice of problems. But yeah, we we've been lucky compared to most districts, but most districts enrollment in cyber schools have gone up. We do not have anyone in a brick and mortar. I think it was three years ago, I came here, we had one student that was a brick and mortar out of Allentown, that was an art school. And years ago, I think we had a couple and the one in writing, which fell apart or folded. We're still waiting for a check back on that, because they have to sell off all their assets and split it back to the schools, so.
And and you're probably wondering, well, how many how many students is this? So just to give you an idea, back in the twenty twenty-one school year, we had approximately a hundred nine students. That were in a cyber charter school that was out of district. Back in the twenty-two school year, it did drastically increase to eighty-eight students. And at the same time this year, it was, we are at eighty-five students. Under Dan Wilcheck, he's done a great job of reaching out to families and encouraging them to come to our cyber school. We invest a lot of time into that, we have our own teachers tutoring our students. And currently, we have ninety-six students in our own program. But obviously, we would prefer that all of the students be in our program. And they would be an Exeter graduate, because we do have, we believe we offer a very strong program here. Our goal is to never keep a child in in cyber school. We very much want them to have the full experience here in our buildings. However, we also recognize that sometimes some of our students do need that opportunity for whatever the reason is. And we want to make sure that's a positive and accommodating experience. However, with the academic support that they need to to be successful. And Mrs. Harris, I think, would like very much like to say something that about this because of what her team has done.
Thank you, yeah, I do just want to highlight the work at the high school that's being done around supported cyber. We pretty much did a revamp of that program this year. And really provided some targeted supports, really made some delineations between what is academic support. And what is more therapeutic support through that program. The team has worked very diligently with supported cyber to develop individualized action plans for students. And plans for transition back into fully immersed in high school classes. So the team has done a tremendous amount of work around that, I am really proud of them for that.
How many students do we have enrolled in full-time charter right now? In our in our program?
So in our own charter, our own cyber academy. Yeah, we have ninety-six students.
Thank you. And what's the difference between how much it costs out of district versus district?
I don't have a breakdown of those specific numbers, I can certainly, we can certainly get that for you. But essentially, what it it encompasses is we do have a facilitator. That we did recently in the beginning of the year hire because of the other responsibilities Dan has. As well as the cost of the tutors as on an as-needed basis. And then there is the cost of the program, but we can certainly have that broken out for you at the next meeting.
Two years ago, it was less than seven thousand per regular ed student for for our program.
That was based on the total cost of what we're spending in our program?
That was based on the total cost for the software and the tutoring and everything. Plus adding our staff dividing by the number of students.
I think that those numbers are important for the community to see, just so that they understand with the amount of work that is going into it. And that the district is putting into it, with that, the amount that the taxpayers are saving by having those ninety-six students. Enrolled in education that the district feels they can be proud of in an in charter. I mean, it would just be interesting to see what that savings looks like as if opposed to if you took those ninety-six kids out. And and put them in a charter school outside of our district, just to show a comparison of the cost.
In sixteen, it was six thousand nine hundred dollars per student. So I'm sure it's going up since then, but that's what it was in sixteen. And I I had a question on the, when we pay a charter school. At one time, we only paid the amount the state gave us per student. We didn't have to break up our in-house or local tax receipts, has that changed?
That that has changed, and if we don't pay them within. Less than thirty days or by end of the month, they can actually go to the state and have it deducted from our state allotment.
Yeah, we always had to give the state a lot, but that was what was given.
They 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 get paid what the charter rate is, which is at the bottom of the previous page. You know, divided by twelve months per month per student.
So moving on to other high, I'm sorry, Mr. Fike.
Question, how many home schooled students do we have right now? I seem to remember something in the mid-eighties in the last enrollment.
Last time I saw, and I I didn't, that was last year was, we had more people in homeschool than we did in charter school. So it was over a hundred, I'm not sure if that's dropped.
It has dropped, I just don't have the number in front of me, but our numbers increased because of the pandemic. And a lot of our families chose to do homeschooling in lieu of sending them on campus for a variety of reasons. That number has decreased, the number that has increased is our McKinney-Vento eligible students, our students who are considered homeless. So at the end of the school year, last year, we were in the sixties and right now, I'm a handful over a hundred.
Back to the, back to the homeschool. What to, I guess to Brian, what if any budget impact is there? Based on the enrollment in homeschool programs?
It's basically just the supplies we have to to give them books, you know, they they can. You know, if they want to participate in athletics, things like that, but you know, they're also taxpayers.
Right, okay.
So moving on to other items that impact the district budget. Of course, we have PISers, which is the retirement pension fund for Pennsylvania educators. And then healthcare, and you can see, again, this is anticipated. What it looks like for this year to be included in the budget and then what it looked like in the past two previous years. I I think everyone expected that healthcare is going to go up, healthcare always goes up. It's a, it's a, an important benefit that we have for our employees, but not without cost. And then that is, of course, something that is completely assumed by a school district budget.
Has the the health consortium, have they explained why such a drastic increase? From from last year, I mean, you look comparison from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. It's a little over, you know, two hundred thousand or so. But now from from last year, we're talking one point, roughly one point three million.
Post-COVID, people are now getting elective surgeries again. They didn't, during COVID, if you remember, it was actually hospitals that closed, like up in Skooko County. Because people were not doing electric surgeries, hip replacement, knee replacements, now they're doing again.
So it's just a technically a backlog that's causing the.
I guess you don't call it backlog. The other thing I wanted to note is another positive on inflation. Is last year, they're projecting the PISers rate to go to thirty-five and a half. We're, this year, we're at thirty-four point nine, I think it is. They actually decreased the PISers rate next year because their earnings are up, so it's down to thirty-four percent. That's why you actually see a slight decrease, even though our salaries went up. Don't I was worried, because on the last slide, when we showed special ed increases, it it's not her regular budget. The only reason they had an increase was for salaries and benefits went up drastically, especially the benefits portion. Her regular programs did not increase.
So when healthcare, when healthcare goes up, do the employees play pay a larger premium as well? Like is is their is their deductions go up as well on, I'm just curious, I mean, it's fourteen point seven percent.
It's a percentage of the healthcare premium, yes.
So theirs goes up as well?
Correct.
Again, just important things to know.
And and by the way, that is something, we will know the final number. I think usually the second week of May, just like the other insurances, you know, no one gives you final numbers. Unless sixty days before the the start of the the policy. They gave us a maximum nine and three quarter, I hope to see that drop. Final C is dropping a lot.
So, once we do get those final numbers, is it possible that you could just do a little research? Compare that to a national average of healthcare increases to see whether, what we're using now, if that's on track for what we're seeing around the country. Or if we're going to take a fourteen point seven percent increase where the country maybe is taking a different number. I don't want to quote a number, because I don't, I don't know what that is, but it would be interesting to see if we're seeing the same scale. That the rest of the country's seeing.
Well done, thank you.
Yeah, and how, do we know how many districts are in the Berks Health Trust?
I think it's seventeen.
Seventeen out of eighteen.
I think there, I think it's actually two or not. But the CTC, I think, is in, so there's seventeen LEAs.
Yeah, I guess our, I I would say our options are pretty limited, regardless if we don't like the increase, it sounds like we're not going to leave the.
It's one plan, it's all.
Mrs. Harris, can I ask you a question? You you had a, you had mentioned something, and I just wanted to make sure I heard it right. Did you say the homeless count was over a hundred? Could you define a child that we consider homeless?
I can, so I'm glad you asked that question. Because I think a lot of people assume that someone who qualifies under homeless status, that means that perhaps they are living. On the street or in a car or in a shelter, and that's not the case at all. So to qualify for homeless status, it simply means that you have had a drastic change in your living situation. That has caused you to be transient in some way. So that could be something like you've been evicted from your apartment. Let's say the landlord sells the apartment building and they're doing evictions. And you might be staying temporarily with a family member until you can get back up on your feet again and find permanent housing. That's something that would qualify you as a homeless family or McKinney-Vento status. Another example might be a family that's going through a domestic dispute, there might be domestic violence in the home. And one of the adults might leave and take the students and again, move in with somebody else. Or, you know, go to a temporary shelter or something like that, again, would qualify for McKinney-Vento status. Once a family qualifies for McKinney-Vento status, they hold that status for the entire school year. So even if during that school year, they obtain permanent housing. They still get the benefit of being considered McKinney-Vento status through the end of the school year. That's another thing that a lot of people don't know, they think as soon as a family is settled. That the district can then ask them to go enroll in the district that they're in now, and that's, that's not the case, that's not how it works.
So what affects us is we have transportation requirements from wherever they're living back to our district.
Do we know how much that has increased, that just the past few years, because it's. High number.
It's pretty typical right now, particularly given, so I can tell you that our two top reasons. For families qualifying for McKinney-Vento status right now are eviction. Which falls in line with what's happening in the larger context of the economy. And again, that is, you know, what other districts are experiencing as well. And then I would say that our second highest reason for McKinney-Vento status is domestic dispute. So again, you know, knowing the increase in mental health needs across the US and after the pandemic. We attend regional homeless meetings where required to, and that's the conversation everywhere.
Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I will say, I will say though, that that number has really grown significantly over that, say, the past fifteen or twenty years.
Correct.
That's just amazing to me, just how how it's shipped, because I don't think the the legislation has changed or the definition of homeless has really changed since that.
It hasn't, there's been some amendments and some updates, but it has been around for a very long time. But some of the expectations have increased. As a matter of fact, when we get to policy committee later, you'll hear me talk just a little bit more about this in relation to Act One of twenty-twenty-two. In relation to families experiencing educational instability, so.
Yeah, I I just want to throw in that there is, there are an increasing number of required services. That you must provide to students who are educationally unstable or homeless. They're no longer just optional, and so you have to staff those requirements.
So what has the district done? What are, we talked about notable increases, but let's talk about some of the notable decreases. So I just want to say that we did not eliminate any individuals. So like they, we looked at the position after someone has either left. Or and and just reevaluated it. So these positions are are positions that we have felt that we we didn't need to fill. So currently, right now, we have two positions in central office that we are, they're not full. They're, we didn't fill them right away. After a a lot of review and discussion and evaluation of programming. We opted to not fill one of the two positions. We are still looking at the other position and are, will look to fill that one, but we are definitely not filling the one position. Which is at a savings of a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Currently, at one of our buildings, we have two long-term subs that will not be needed. And that will be a cost savings at a hundred thousand dollars. And whenever we have any type of retirements or movement, we always look at positions and look at the possibility of elimination through attrition. And that's what is 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 constantly being done. And over the years, other positions are added that you might not necessarily need anymore. So we are looking at the elimination of one professional staff. But again, this is, this is not people who are, are, you know, being furloughed, I don't want to give that impression. Um, all these people have either moved on or will have a job here in the district, um, it's just not those particular jobs. And again, those two long-term subs, we, we, we do not need, um, so the impact to the budget is a little over three hundred dol-, three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and Brian did already include that in the numbers. Um, that were presented as part of the proposed budget.
Could the administration confirm that uh, we are no longer in next budget year paying for anyone's. Uh, salary through S R grant funds?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we're not.
We're not.
Okay.
We're not, I'm confirming it.
Thank you.
Are these positions salary only, or is this the whole package?
This is salary only.
Right, so do we have a idea of what that, because we're also not paying benefits to those people now too, correct?
Right, depending on, it's probably another forty to forty-five percent.
So it's not, so the total savings is actually much higher than that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
On the budget?
Yes.
Correct.
I think in the future, we should see, even if you want to separate it out.
Sure.
What the difference is, because dollar saved is, is dollar saved, so this, this isn't accounting for the whole thing. Second question, we had a discussion six months ago, I believe that we, maybe it was more than six months ago, we raised the hourly rate of our substitutes. Uh, under the assumption that we're getting rid of two long-term substitute positions. And I understand that we're filling those substitutes now, or do we still have a shortage? Because it seems pretty critical at the time, and if we're not, then why are we getting rid of two long-term substitutes?
These are, these are actually uh, positions for a, a year-long position, not that we're eliminating substitutes. These are year-long positions.
Right.
So those two individuals will hopefully go back into our substitute pool unless they get another long-term subposition. But these were uh, classes that we filled because we had a number of, of students. Um, but we're not eliminating the person, it's just we no longer need that position. It's for a bubble class, yeah.
So, are, if you have a long-term sub, they're not necessarily a float, where they just cover any classroom?
No, this was, they're assigned to a, a class for the year.
And are we allowed to have long-term substitutes that float?
Um, there are some districts that do do that, um, they, they add those positions. It's, it's not something that we have discussed at length before, but there are other districts that do do that.
And is it a concern with this, with the substitute shortage? Of possibly losing two people that we could be using as floating subs, full-time with the district, where we know we have them secured?
For these two positions, they were assigned to a classroom, so they weren't, they weren't in other positions, they weren't floating for us. So it's, it's something that's totally different, there's always a possibility that you're gonna lose substitutes at any given time, because. Many substitutes are seeking full-time employment, as I, I'm sure these individuals are. Um, so it really is a case by case basis, but if that's something that the board would like us to investigate with having. Assigned full-time subs that are assigned to buildings that float, we could certainly look at doing that, and like I said, other districts do do that.
I'm not necessarily saying what we should or shouldn't do, I don't know enough about it to say that we should or shouldn't do it, uh. My question is, are we able to fill classrooms with subs that we need to, or if not, are we taking? Are we canceling specials for our students in some cases, and then the second question is. If we do have a full-time sub that we're confident, floating sub, I'll, I'll call them, that we're confident we're going to utilize every day. Is spending that money over a year's time less expensive than filling it with a daily substitute rate?
So that's a, a loaded question. I'll, I'll, I'll break, I'll break it, I'll break it apart.
Can I, can I ask one thing? Can, th- there's, I guess contractual, after so many days, we have to teach them, treat them as long-term subs, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Diane?
If they're in the same position.
Right, and we, we do have other long-term subs to take over for people that go out and leave, apps, things like that.
There, there is, there is a, a sub shortage across the country, and there's a lot of districts that are constantly advertising and do have. These permanent subpositions in buildings, and I would guess that they still are short subs on a regular basis. It just alleviates some of the shortage, um, we, we are constantly uh, seeking advertising. And approving subs, the majority of our subs are actually guest teachers, they're not certified teachers, which appears to be the, the trend. Um, right now, um, so in a lot of ways, we've been more fortunate than other, than other districts. Um, but day-to-day subs take positions based on their availability or their interest in a position. Um, or their comfort level, and so any given day, we do absolutely have positions that are, are not filled. Um, having building uh, subs would be fantastic, and I think the building principals would absolutely appreciate that. But um, any, again, any other given day, you could have four or five teachers out. And sometimes you have all your positions filled, and if it's a Friday in May, when it's nice, you might have one position filled. And it could potentially be that building sub, so it would just, it would depend on, you know, how we would like to proceed with that.
Can we go back one slide so I can see that number again? I'm just asking, at the end of the day, if the district has a need, and the administration feels as though they, that this would be a benefit. Is it something we should look at? I mean, I'm all, I'm all for saving money and balancing a budget, but. We're, we're trying to get rid of a hundred thousand dollars in, in two long-term subs. I understand that they were bubble subs, I'm just saying though, that if we exchanged them, I don't know what the right word is. For two floating subs and it costs the same, it was a wash, is that benefiting our students? As opposed to our students not being able to get the quality of education they would get if they either A, didn't get a sub or got a sub that. Maybe these subs are, are certified.
Uh, sure, I mean, as a building principal, I would have loved to have had a dedicated building sub. Um, you know, to, to be there and fill classrooms, and if we could start with. Keeping these two positions and, and making them floating subs, it's certainly something that. We could uh, engage with the, the, the union with about what that would look like. Um, we're happy to do that, if that's an interest, to see if we'd like to pursue that, and, and go from there.
I'm only one of nine, but I don't, if we're going to make cuts, I don't want to do it at the cost of academics. There are, you know, there are a lot of places that we can look to make cuts, if this is something that's going to benefit our students. Then I think that the board should at least have the right to listen to what the proposal is and, and consider it. I don't know, it's a count meeting, so I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Yeah, I, I mean, me, I, I would personally want to see the numbers, I mean, are we talking about? Subs that, I mean, contractually, I would imagine we have to pay them regardless of, we have a spot open for them to work. In, in, in that scenario, so I don't, I, I, I'd want to, I, I'm not opposed to it, but I would definitely want to see. You know, if, if this is something we'd actually need to explore versus just using our regular substitutes.
Sure, um, there's definitely, I can say, I, I look at the A S O P, um. The posting every day for how many people that uh, we have in positions and, and how many we're missing. And, and every day, we need subs, um, so they, they certainly would go. Used every day, um, the fight would be where, where do we put them, you know, so. You know, do you put them at the high school where you have more students, or do you um, put them at the elementary building where specialists are, are. You know, getting pulled and, and then teachers aren't getting necessarily a prep and students aren't getting a break. Um, that would be a, a more of a conversation, but most certainly, they would be used every day. So where, where are we? Um, where were we and where are we now? So, um, in December, you can see that we have broken it down as to what the revenue was. Which was that pie chart that we talked about, and then where our expenditures were coming in at, at eighty-five uh, million dollars. And at that point, we were at a three million dollar deficit. Um, as of now, our March budget with the debt restructuring, you can see that um. Our revenue has increased, um, because of various factors, again, this is, this is estimates. Based on what we, what Brian thinks the state most likely is going to come in at, and then that bump in the revenue. From our, our own uh, interest that we've been receiving. And then our expenditures, we were able to cut those back as going through the, the budget and making some adjustments. And then what the difference is um, at that hundred thirty thousand dollars, that's where we're currently at, at the deficit. And again, this is not a final budget, because many of this, of these things are also still built on assumptions. So again, just a reminder of what our budget history looks like, um, you can see that. Um, over the years, the district has been taking from the fund balance consistently. And um, while also simultaneously raising taxes. Um, this year, it is our goal to obviously not take from the fund balance, which is not a good practice. And so um, with doing the, the financing with the restructuring, um, we, we will not need to do that this year.
So one thing that's unclear about these two budgets is, we're, because we restructured. We're, we're saving on our debt that we were asking taxpayers to cover year over year. So what act, you know, if I did my numbers right, it looks like we're looking at about a. And, and this is not a tax increase, but looking at about a four point four percent increase in spend. Not including the, the debt, is that about right?
Correct.
So it's about three point seven million dollars.
Yeah, we, we were contracts, uh. You know, with the uh. Depending anywhere from three and a quarter to three point four percent increase, and then benefits up to nine, three quarter percent uh, increase. Yeah, it comes out to about four point four with inflation on, on most of the products we purchase.
Doctor Howler, do you mind going back to the slide that showed the breakout of the increases? That might be a few clicks back.
That's the one that had all the functions, salaries, benefits.
I just thought it'd be good to look at that while we're discussing it.
Thank you.
Here, uh, this one, yes, thank you.
No problem.
So, and one of the things that I would like to see at our next meeting is. Where that additional three point seven million dollars is coming from, I mean, we just saw one point. Three million of it comes right out of medical. Um, because this really doesn't necessarily break it down to that three point seven million increase. It would just be good to show the taxpayers where we're spending, and that we're not, I think we talked about it last month, that we're not buying, you know, we're not. We're not adding services, we're not adding, we're not adding to the structure of the district, it's just that. This, you know, there's, there's a big cost this year.
Yeah, so, but the, the last slide that you were showing was, it was an eighty-five million for the new budget? Was that what we were looking at?
That, that was December.
That was December, okay.
Right, so take two million off that, brought down the uh, debt service. And then, so the increase, you know, if we're looking at supplies, uh, half of that supplies is electric cost.
Yeah.
Because we had a five-year deal that we're paying three point two cents a kilowatt hour, as of June, it goes to seven point two cents. We, we locked in for the next eighteen months.
So the, the three.
Gasoline has doubled since the last contract.
Yeah.
Uh, oil, those types of supplies, you know, the toilet paper has doubled or tripled, but that's not a huge amount, but it has increased, right?
Yeah.
Uh, copy paper went from twenty-two dollars a case to almost forty-two dollars a case.
Yeah, so they, they.
Benefits, oh, increased one point three million, salaries increased eight hundred fifty-three thousand, uh, and. If you took three, the average of three and a quarter that everyone got, it actually should be a lot more, but. There's positions we didn't fill with what we're talking about, so it actually brought it down. So the eight hundred fifty-three thousand increase instead of one point two or one point three million.
Yeah, so if, if you eliminate that second to last line with the restructure, that's gonna bring us close to that three point seven million.
Yeah.
That we're talking about.
That's, that's where I was missing, it was, that's what was throwing me off, correct?
Yeah, so.
Debt service reserve, the debt service went from over ten percent down to seven point five percent.
But yeah, so I, I would take it from, from this, our big three contributors to the large increases, supplies, salaries and benefits.
Correct.
Yeah.
And salaries and benefits are seventy percent of the budget.
Yeah, and supplies, uh, the, is, that's where the energy increases contributed to?
Increases electric, uh, fuel to run our buses, gasoline to run the vans. You know, uh, propane, our natural gas went up, you know, to heat our buildings.
Jason, I appreciate you saying that, because I think when the public sees it, you know, I think people directly relate it to student services, right? So when you see supplies, pencils and crayons did not cause us an extra million dollars this year.
Yes.
Uh, but, I mean, but, you know, if you didn't understand that, you would understand how, you know, supplies means.
And truthfully, this is the way the state makes us code everything, six hundred series of supplies. Because they want to be able to compare every district to every district, so, you know, six forty-one in supplies are textbooks, right? Uh, you know, six-ten, if we go and look just at six-ten, that's your paper, you know, your pencils and those old things. Electric has a different number, gas has a different number, propane has a different number, yeah. They break it down so they, you know, see what we're actually spending on, they can compare all the districts.
And just to be clear, we have no control over anything within those supplies. As far as if we were to say, we want to look at making cuts.
We.
We're looking at all, all free toilet paper.
Down to sixty instead of sixty-eight.
Understood, but I mean, we have no control over, over kilowatts per hour going up.
No, and we, and everything we do is either bid or purchase through a cooperative, because we can't just say. Uh, you know, Uncle Ben, we want to purchase your product, now we have to bid it, make sure we're getting the, the best bang for the buck. Uh, sometimes it costs more because, you know, uh, they have to put up bid bonds and uh. Meet the requirements of the state that, you know, they're paying their people fair wage, so. Also, we, you know, if we're buying electric, we bought it for eighteen months, we could have bought it for twelve months, we could have bought it for twenty-four. Or forty-eight months, but when we did this last year, we picked the, the, the best bang for our buck. You know, figuring if we, if we change, we'd be changing eighteen months.
And I believe that was going from three hundred seven thousand a month to seven hundred seven thousand a month.
Yeah.
For, for electricity costs.
A kilowatt hour, we had a five-year deal the last time, so three point two cents a kilowatt, seven point two.
I, I think it's, I think the most important thing about this slide is to understand, and for the public to understand that. You know, we can, as a, as a board, we can start looking at places where we can cut this budget, and we can. Make sure that our expenditures last year and this year equal the same, however, these are the things that we're looking at that we don't have any control over. So we have to look at, I mean, if, if you just look at salaries, benefits and uh, supplies. We would need to find ways to cut out of direct student services, three million dollars. And I think that those are the things that are pretty shattering when you look at a budget, not saying that. We couldn't find ways to, to, to cut things if we had to, but in order to keep services the way they are, with, with what's available. You know, that, that comes at a cost of additional three million dollars beyond our control at this moment.
And I guess the other thing you should mention is, we also had to make up for the deficit that we started with.
And then just to be clear, if we, if we looked at this the way we're looking at right now, moving forward, if those numbers matched. We would at this point be looking at a zero percent tax increase, is that correct?
Correct, and the first time since, what is it?
Two thousand eighteen?
Fourteen, that we actually have a balanced budget.
And that's a zero percent tax increase without taking out anything out of our reserve funds?
Correct, yeah, I bel- believe in prior years, when there were zero tax, zero percent tax increases, there was probably still something taken out of it since.
I, I, we showed through two thousand fourteen, is they've always had a deficit spending, they, they take now reserve.
Yeah.
When it bodes.
Yeah, there was, there was two years, um.
From, when I started here, it was almost three point two million, and my goal was to cut it in half each year. And by third year, get, you know, fourth year, get to zero. And by third year get, you know, fourth year get to zero.
Yeah.
Uh, so that was twenty twenty-one, that was three point two million dollars use of fund balance. Before that was two point six million, one point nine, nine hundred fifty thousand, one point four billion, one point five, two point two.
Yeah.
You know, uh, last year eight hundred thirty-four thousand, so.
Yep, yeah, two thousand fifteen to sixteen, and uh, two thousand eighteen to nineteen, those were your two years without tax increases.
I do think though that moving forward after, you know, we decide what we're gonna do with this, we need to continue these discussions throughout the whole year next year. You know, with the debt service, there is a huge shelf, what is it, Brian, about six hundred thousand dollars next year? Is the shelf from this year to next year? So, so I, I mean, we need to, we need to look at this right, right away, because if, if we have to look at. You know, this seriously next year because of what we already know are expenditures. You know, we, this is something that needs to be continued throughout the whole year.
Right, and actually that brings us into the next slide, because you also asked, spending on those capital plans.
So if I could ask Joe if you could click on that, thank you, and, and make that a little larger, a lot larger. So, uh, what Brian I did for the board and the community is. Um, he broke out the capital projects uh by location. Uh, cause it's, they're not all school-based projects, there is the uh maintenance garage that's on the grounds of the high school. So, and then there's some other areas like the stadium that also required a much-needed maintenance. Um, so you can see it's again organized by school. And you can see the projects listed and the total cost. And then basically the timeframe in which the sched, the, the um. Projects will essentially be started, it doesn't necessarily mean that, like when the money will be borrowed, borrowed and started. Or, and spent, um, so you can see again that we, as we, we looked with. Through the capital projects and, and made decisions about what is a capital project and what should be maintenance. Um, Brian's uh threshold for a capital project was that it really needed to have a high, uh. Like basically shelf life, um, so fifteen years is the minimum. Um, and that's just because of the types of projects or the school itself. Um, but the majority of them that you'll see will be twenty to twenty-five years. And, and I'm gonna turn it over to you, Brian, to talk through that.
Okay, um, so in twenty twenty-four, you know, there's some things we could down below, we're gonna do this summer. Uh, but a lot of this stuff we need to put out to bid and like masonry repair, repointing, things like that. Uh, it's a summer project, we can't be doing that while students around the buildings. Uh, so, uh, most of that this fall will be, you know, if the board approves a, a capital project and the borrowing. Uh, later this fall, uh, we'll put out to bid over the probably November, December timeframe to award. Uh, it's gonna be tough getting contractors, so sooner we, we put out the bid and award, the sooner, the more contractors we'll get for next summer. And uh, same thing for following twenty twenty-five year and twenty twenty-six years. Um, so if we, I, I think we've, you know, we're, we're still have a lot of discussion on, you know. What the board wants to do, this is our suggestion on the projects that we know that, that should be done. Uh, these are also projects that were in the two thousand seventeen uh facility study that were never completed. Uh, there was a lot completed before, uh, but if you go down through, we, we talked, we've already started, uh. We will start working on a junior high um. Heating system because that's, that's on its last legs, uh, part of that money would be spent this year. Uh, the other portion that will be spent this year will be on uh some security upgrades. And the rest of the security upgrades will be in next year, as a priority, at least that's my priorities. Uh, I don't think we can get the rest of those done in twenty twenty-three, cause we'll have to, to uh. Find a contractors and make those security and safety upgrades, which will, right now, uh, allow the lead time for the things we're looking at. Or, you know, six to eight months, uh, which will take us into the following year once you approve a capital plan.
And I, if I could just add, um, as you, as you scroll through the buildings. You'll see that the junior high and the senior high are, have the most notable um amounts uh for projects. And that's because as Brian mentioned, um, the, the previous administration did. Accomplish a number of items that were outlined on that KCBA report. But the majority of them were uh things that needed to be done at the elementary buildings, at the three elementary buildings. And um, all the, the roofs were uh either partially completed or, or fully completed and are under warranty. Um, but the other items were basically at the junior high and senior high and, and they were not completed. And that's why you see the, the substantial price tag for those items.
I did wanna make a note, we'll make the correction, the tennis courts is two ninety-five, not two, one ninety-one. We'll make that correction, I'm sorry about that. That was under admin.
And that's because those are here, yeah, and that's because those tennis courts are actually on these grounds.
What's the total, if you go down further? You know, one of the things that I wanna remind the community, and I've spoken to a lot of people, I've seen a lot of commentary. These are projects that need to be done to maintain our property the right way. Now, we can figure out ways to cut more out of our budget and put more in our reserves and save. But these projects need to be done either way, so if we didn't take this debt out. These would fall under, under the general budget in some way or another over the next five to ten years. And this money is going to be spent one way or another. And so, you know, our obligation is to make sure that we can find a way to do that in what makes the best sense for the community. But these aren't wish lists for adding things, you know, these are, these are. Taking care of things in some cases that are in disrepair and need to be completed. So, the, the hard decision I think for me is, is that this money is spent. Whether we take it out of the debt service, whether we save in our reserves and then spend it in the next three to five to, to eight years, ten years. But these are projects that have to be done, and the longer we wait, I think we've seen what happens when we wait on projects that need to be completed. That price tag on how much it costs to complete them continues to go up. And so I just think that we, we really need to be cognizant of that as a community when we're looking at why we're spending. Looking at taking out twenty-one million dollars in debt. We were gonna spend twenty-one million dollars either way, it's just a matter of how we're going to do it. Thank you.
And I, I did, you know, I keep on reiterating, we've been doing projects before I started. You know, Lorraine Elementary, their HVAC system was completely redone, uh, Jacksonville Elementary completely redone. Uh, we just are almost complete on the bus garage, anything that has to be done is the final. The CADM code, that'll be done in May, but we have occupancy as we stand here. Uh, all the roofs, uh warranties, you know, have been redone, the warranties, the, the. Closeful fund expires, I think it's twenty thirty-four, and at that time you basically do a scan on the roof. Look for wet spots, cut those out, fix them, and then they give you another five-year warranty, so it's, they're. The roofs are all in good shape, everything's been maintained. Uh, that, these are things that haven't been done, that were addressed, that will have to be done.
I didn't wait for the average homeowner to uh understand this. Uh, you see up there, we're gonna replace the pumps. Well, if the pumps go down, then you have to close the school because you're not. Complying with the regulations of the school now. In my house, I know I'm gonna have to replace my plumbing in certain areas in the near future, so I'm saving some money. We aren't allowed by law to do that, our savings account is limited by law. So the answer to that, if you can't have enough in savings, you've got to borrow the money. So we borrow the money and because we are an institution and because of the credit rating that we hold. We get that money at a bargain rate compared to what you would get from loophole heating. If you were gonna replace your plumbing, you know, so it's, it's not a matter of choice. If we wanna raise the taxes enough to cover all these expenses every year, we could do that also. But that is not appropriate manager of our funds. By limiting it to fifteen years, we're getting a. A product that's gonna last out the bond and we're getting it the best rate. And we are prohibited by the law from having that much in savings, so there's your choices.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Quinter for making that statement, um, because that, that's very true, most people probably don't, don't realize that. Um, because you, you know, save for furniture and you save for a new roof and, or you finance it, but it's, it's not quite. At the price tag at twenty million dollars, um, but school districts are, are very different entities. Um, and um, one of the things that has been happening over the years, as we shared on the one chart. Was that the district has been raising taxes while simultaneously taking from the fund balance. Which ultimately will in, impact negatively impact your standard and pores rating, which then increases. Um, the amount of which you need to borrow from, so it, it's, it's very, um, it's very detrimental for a district to continue. To do and manage their finances in that way, um, and so we're fortunate that we're not in that position. But as both you and Mr. Morgan pointed out, these are the things that we must do and will need to be done one way or another. So that concludes our presentation, there's only one more slide and it's just a glossary of terms to help our, our community. Uh, kind of familiarize themselves with the way that a budget is, is crafted, and again, just a reminder that we are um going to be. Um, having our uh last budget meeting uh for the community at a location on the twenty-sixth. Um, and that's when you'll see an opportunity to see our new transportation center, and we certainly hope that you'll come out to see that and. Um, you know, hear an update about where we are with the uh, any changes and challenges with the budget at this time, so thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Howler and Mr. Pike. Next, um, we'll be amending the agenda. It is recommended, bear with me here. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors amend the published agenda for tonight's meeting as follows. We will be adding special loading meeting items by B, D, and E. For, for the reason that those items were placed on the wrong agenda for this evening. Would someone like to second that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any need for discussion? All, all um in agreement with, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
No's, it carries. All right, next we'll be moving on to education, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Doctor, hearing, uh, six items on the agenda, first one is conference requests. Uh, this will be moved to the uh voting meeting, I believe there are six or seven. Uh, any question about these?
I think I might have, give me one second, yes, can we have an explanation of what virtual N A N S is? Is that a mandatory requirement for our nurses? That would be the last one.
It's the annual nursing conference that they attend where they get updates on um requirements and best practices.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, item B is for information, only six field trips within the sixty-mile radius. Questions or comments on those? Hearing none, to item C. One field trip beyond the sixty-mile radius is a, this will move to the voting meeting. Senior High Varsity Baseball Team to Disney World, actually that trip has already occurred. Was that, uh, does anybody know, was that for a tournament or what exactly was that?
That's actually, I mean, the same, the secret's for next year.
Ironically challenged as usual, sorry.
No, 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 I, I did the same thing, um, it's their annual spring um training that they do. Um, and they just like to get it in a, a year in advance, so it's, they can focus on the other pieces of the.
Give me twelve or thirteen more years and I'll be up.
That's okay.
To intercept that, okay, and we will, uh, we will move that as well to the voting meeting. Um, item D, District Special Education Plan, uh, this will move to the next meeting. Recommended that Board of School Directors approve the Special Education Plan for July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Um, I'm wondering if, uh, Mrs. Harris, if you could, uh, somewhere between thirty-five and seventy words. Uh, summarize the, uh, I'm, I'm teasing, of course.
I was saying, Mr. Fidler, you're gonna be disappointed, cause I actually have a presentation.
Oh, wonderful.
So it's gonna be a little longer than thirty.
Take it away.
All right.
Before you jump into that, Mrs. Harris, could you, um, or someone explain who funds the senior high bar, uh, the, the team going to Disney World under item C?
Mister Campbell's here, but I believe that they fund, the players funded themselves through fundraisers, and that's how it's primarily done.
Okay, so we don't have any obligation?
I don't believe that we have, other than sending a nurse, so. And, and our coach, and our coach is a teacher.
Thank you.
While Mrs. Harris is, is walking to the podium, could I, uh, also ask, in the draft, there are a few individuals listed on the steering committee? That are no longer with the district, are we able to?
They'll actually stay on there because they were a part of the steering committee that developed the plan.
I see, thank you.
Good question. Um, thank you, Mr. Way, for getting the presentation up there. So I do promise it is a mini presentation, but the Special Education Plan in and of itself is many, many pages. And it is more of a compliance-related plan than our comprehensive plan is, so I did wanna just do a quick summary for you. Of what is contained in the Special Education Plan and how we sort of come about and developing our plan. So, um, every district undergoes cyclical special education monitoring through the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And as a result of that monitoring, every district receives a report that contains areas of strength. And also areas of corrective action. And then the expectation is that the district develops its Special Education Plan around those areas of improvement that are needed. And so, um, you'll see in this plan that it's directly connected to the Special Education Compliance Monitoring. That we underwent actually the first year, uh, that I arrived here at Exeter. Um, I've had the good fortune, I guess maybe you can say, to go through special ed cyclical monitoring several times as a school district administrator. Uh, the monitoring is very intensive, it's one of the more intensive monitorings that PDE does. But it's very beneficial for districts once you get on the other side of all of the work. Because it really helps you set goals and direction for your special education programming. So, with that said, let's see if the clicker works for me. You're right, Doctor Howler. There it goes. Um, with that said, um, we had a steering committee that met to vet the plan. But again, a lot of the decisions made in this plan are based directly from our compliance monitoring. So areas of strength that were identified for the district through that monitoring are our continuum of services. And by that, I mean the full array of offerings that we have for our special education students in-house here on campus. So we have a robust offering based on individual student needs in grades K through twelve. And we are not lacking in any areas of service for students. Another area of strength for us through our compliance monitoring is our case management of out-of-district placements. So you will often see on the agendas approval for contracts for students to be able to go to um out-of-district placements based on need. And um, one of the things that our team is doing really well right now is doing case management. For those students that go to these out-of-district placements. So for example, our special education supervisors are keeping data on those students, they're attending IEP meetings for those students. They're staying connected with families in those out-of-district placements by having regular communication with them. And most importantly, when those students go to out-of-district placements, they're having conversations around transition. And whether or not there will be a point in time at which those students will transition back to our. and whether or not there will be a point in time at which those students will transition back to our programs here on campus because that's ultimately where we want all of our students to be. For some perspective, we, um, the number of students that we have in out of district placements in comparison to some of our peers in the county, um, there's a district that's very similar to us in enrollment size, um, very similar in structure in terms of buildings, the number of buildings they have. And they currently have three times as many students as we do in out of district placements. Um, and I believe for us, our lower number is attributed to the fact that we're doing good case management in looking at those students' individual needs and making strong decisions about them returning to districts when returning to our district when they can. But I also think it goes back to our continuum of services that we have here on campus and that we're able to meet a lot of those needs here on campus. The other area of strength that was identified for us was our inter-agency collaboration. Um, the team here at Exeter does an outstanding job of working with outside agencies and our partner agencies in the county in terms of individual action planning for students, whether that be working with um, SAM case management, which is now Polcom, uh, crisis management, working with them, um, or working with SAM truancy, or working with children and youth services, um, or working with M H D D in the county. We are really uh, developing a system by which we are having targeted meetings for students who are at risk and pulling in the agency supports that we need in order to support those students and families. That's a definite strength here at Exeter. Oh, I'll go back one. Uh, one more strength that's not up there on the slide because it's not necessarily embedded into the plan and related to our compliance monitoring is our administrative team here in the district. So what I mean by that is for the first time in I think a while here in the district, the administrative team is all working together for the purpose of building capacity within the special education programs and meeting our student needs. So everyone has a seat at the table in those discussions. So people like Brian, who manage our budget, he's not doing something separate with special ed. He's a part of those conversations around what we need for programming. Diane's a part of those conversations about helping us to recruit high quality candidates for our special education teaching staff. The building administrators are all invested in our students with special needs and are always looking for ways to be more involved and be more helpful to our families of students with special needs. I know that sounds like it should be a given, but that's not always a given everywhere. And I think in the past, there's been some struggles here with that. So I would identify that personally as a strength for our district right now. The cohesiveness of the different levels of the administrative team in terms of supporting our special ed programs. So things we need to address based on our cyclical monitoring. A couple of different areas, participation in state assessments, meaning largely P S S As. Um, special education dropout rate, decreasing that rate. Uh, access to least restrictive environment. And what that means is increasing opportunities for students who have special needs to participate more fully in the regular education environment. Um, and then areas, uh, another area where we need to uh, do some corrective action is in the area of discipline by demographic. So we have some demographic areas within our student population where we've got to work on the number of discipline referrals that we have for that particular demographic. So how we plan to address those corrective areas. For state assessment of participation rates, that's not just a special education concern in the district. That's also a regular education concern. I believe Dr. Howler received a communication about that a little while back, um, that the district in and of itself has a flag for participation rate in state assessments. I do think there's some history here in Exeter where sort of the expectation was not a focus on that data. Um, I believe at one point there may even even been a resolution years ago to sort of not be focused on that data. But there are consequences to that. And one of those consequences is that you can get flagged for your lack of participation in state assessments. Um, so our action plan for special education is similar to our action plan for regular education in the sense that we need to do more training with our staff when they're communicating with families about participation in state assessments. We need to do better communication overall across the district with families, with district-wide communications about the importance of participation in state assessments. And then additionally, in special ed, there is a special section in the I E P. The I E P is the Individualized Education Plan that we write for a special ed student. Um, there's a specific page in there that addresses how students will receive accommodations on those state assessments. And we need to do more training in that area for our staff and then spend more time with our families talking about that specific section of the I E P. Um, in terms of action planning for reducing the special education dropout rate, again, as you know, that's not just a special education issue here in Exeter. That is a regular education issue as well. You've seen that reflected um, in our graduation rate that we are trying to improve. Uh, the good news is in this particular area, a lot of the work has already been done and we've already made significant improvements in this area that would meet the requirements for corrective action. Uh, you've heard me talk previously about the work particularly done at the high school around um, the framework and process that they've built for reviewing at-risk students. And that includes special ed students in that framework. Um, and developing individualized action plans for those students based on what their at-risk factors are. The other thing the high school is doing that's really important in addressing this is they're doing that at a much earlier grade level than previously done. So they're starting to look at ninth graders who are at risk, which gives them the opportune, more opportunity to work with students as they move through the grade levels. Ultimately, my hope would be that we can move that framework and process down to eighth grade as well because I think that's a critical moment for students in terms of transition to high school and at-risk factors. Um, but that is work that has yet to be done. The initial work right now has been done at the high school on that. So out of those two corrective actions, we are further along in terms of addressing the dropout rate than we are the state assessment participation rate. I feel like I have my TV remote. Um, in terms of addressing access to least restrictive environment, again, this is another area where we've already made significant improvements since our cyclical monitoring was completed. And um, so when our cyclical monitoring was completed, we were at, we had fifty-seven percent of our special ed students participating in the regular class eighty percent or more of the time. As of last year, we increased that number to sixty-seven percent, so a ten percent increase. And we are now currently over the state average in terms of our rates of inclusion. So I'm going to give us a check off in that little uh, box for corrective action there. Um, but in terms of ongoing work that we're doing in that area and some of the work that was already done that attributed to the increase is of course, training for staff in terms of I E P development. There's a large portion of that document that's dedicated to looking at accommodations that students can receive to help them be successful in the regular education requirement. And we've actually um, done some training with staff and plan as part of this plan to continue that training. Additionally, um, we've uh, begun to take a look at individualizing curriculums and methodologies to match students' needs. So it's not a one-size-fits-all program for special education curriculum. In other words, if a student has a particular need in the area of literacy, um, we're customizing the methodologies that we're using for that specific need. And then additionally, as I mentioned, training for staff and optimizing schedules for students. So the district has been doing a lot of work on schedules, particularly at the elementary level, to make sure that students have both access to the regular education curriculum and regular education time in the regular classroom as well as intervention time with the special education teacher. Previously, um, the and the reason why we received this corrective action was because previously in the district, um, there had been a model where it was a little heavier on the side of spending more time in the special education classroom. And when you utilize a model like that, sometimes you lose connection to the language of instruction in the regular education classroom, and that can create some gaps. So we've remediated that area. And then the last area is discipline by demographic. This is an area that we have just started to have conversation about and will be our last area to address through this action plan. So we've got to take a look um, at our data collection procedures around discipline and make sure that we're collecting all of that data and reporting that data to the state correctly. Additionally, you've heard us talk about the work that we're implementing at the elementary level regarding school-wide behavior supports and positive behavior supports. Um, research shows that when schools have a school-wide positive behavior support model in place, that decreases discipline referrals. And so we're have hoping to have that same experience as we implement those models. Um, additionally, at the junior high and the senior high, you've heard me reference a few times what I call discipline plus. And it's that concept of that idea that in addition to providing discipline, we really need to be looking at what caused the behavior in the first place and how to repair relationships that have been damaged by that behavior so that behavior doesn't continue to occur and those students don't continue to incur discipline referrals. Okay. Um, another section of the special education plan that is not related to your corrective actions but is a mandated part of the plan is areas that the state expects us to do training in regardless of whether you have a corrective action in that area or not. Um, these are four of those areas, uh, training in the area of autism, positive behavior supports, power professionals, and I E P development. So uh, we've listed there some areas that we would like to uh, do specific training for um, under those categories. In the area of autism, we'd like to do continued training in the area of social skills instruction for our students identified um, as autistic. And in the area of assistive technology. So very often when we have students um, early on who have autism, they might be non-verbal and might need to be able to um, develop alternative ways to communicate. And that's where assistive technology comes in. And we've assessed our needs here in the district and believe that we need to do continued training for our staff in that area. In positive behavior supports, we believe we need to continue to do safety care training. Safety care training is training on a series of de-escalation strategies to be able to help students who are in crisis. We also think that we need to do continued training in the area of positive behavior supports. As I mentioned, this is a mandated area that we need to do training in. But for us, it's also related to that corrective action of discipline related to our demographics. Um, and then also additional training for our special education staff on positive behavior support planning. We do have in our bargaining unit a board certified behavior analyst who help our special education teachers write positive behavior support plans for students. But we want to do continued training with our special education staff on um, being able to continue to monitor those plans after they're written and to help keep fidelity with those plans. Then with the area of power professionals, again, um, doing training with our power professionals in de-escalation strategies. Very often, the reason we hire a power professional or uh, what you would call a personal care assistant in some cases is because a student is struggling with behaviors. And so we want to make sure that they're highly trained in the area of de-escalation strategies. And then additionally, we're going to continue to participate in the Power Professional Academy run by the B C I U. Um, they provide the initial training for all power professionals as required by the state um, during their first year of employment as a power professional in the district. And then in the area of I E P development, we're going to do continued training um, largely through Sweet Stevens, Cats and Williams on um, I E P development. Tom Warner is our special education solicitor. Uh, you met him at our last uh, board meeting. Um, and he uh, comes on campus and does training for our staff, not just our special education staff, but for our building administrators and uh, in some topics for our regular education staff as well. Here we'll be targeting specifically I E P development and I E P writing. He's already done a little bit of that training this year for us, but we'll have him back again throughout this plan. This plan goes through um, twenty twenty six, by the way. I don't think I mentioned that at the beginning. And then also continued um, work on uh, I E P writing as it relates to progress monitoring. So all students have individualized goals in their plans and we're required by law to monitor progress on those goals. Um, and that's a very important important part of data collection and understanding whether or not a student is responding to the instruction and interventions that they receive. So we want to make sure that our teachers are highly trained in those data collection procedures. And then a couple more areas that we are mandated to do training in. Transition, science of literacy, and parent training. So transition is as it relates to students aged fourteen years or older who um, have an I E P. And for every one of those students, we are required to develop transition plans um, for graduation and post-secondary outcomes. This is an area where I know, having worked in many other districts, is really an area of ongoing training all the time because things change drastically for students in terms of what's available from an inter-agency approach related to transition and what's available in your local community related to transition. So we really customize our trainings for staff based on that. Additionally, um, because there's been a lot of new requirements around graduation and the graduation pathways in the state of Pennsylvania, again, transition for special education students will be an area where we'll need to do updated training related to that. Um, uh, science of literacy, you've heard Dr. Howler talk a little bit about this already. Um, PDE is mandating for all staff, both special ed and regular education staff. Um, anyone who teaches literacy, basically. Um, a required number of hours of training in the science of literacy. This is where special ed has a slight advantage because the very root of what we do in special education is the science of literacy and explicit methodologies. So even though our teachers are pretty well versed on this, there's always lots to learn. Um, and they will be part of that mandated training around explicit instruction for structured literacy. And then last, but certainly not least, um, parent training. Every district is mandated to do ongoing parent training as it relates to the programs and services that they offer for students with special needs. And there's a variety of ways that districts can do that. They can do that through community forums. They can do that um, through um, adding things to their website, adding webinars. They can do that by pushing out information from the I U about local task forces that exist for um, families um, who have children with special needs. And we will engage in all of those methods in order to do our parent training. One of the things that I heard when we met as a committee, we did have parent representation on that committee. And one of the things that I heard loud and clear was that the district definitely needs to focus on parent training as an area. Um, I think it's something that's sort of waned over the years. And I think we need to get back to things that are normal, like communication and relationships after the pandemic. And this is going to be one of those areas where we're going to highlight and focus on that. I mentioned the committee um, that met to vet this plan. There were a couple of other suggestions that came out of the committee that aren't necessarily in the compliance plan that we're submitting, but that I thought were worth mentioning because I think they're ideas that we should explore um, as a team. And um, one of those. It's supposed to have more of an effect, but it won't click. One of those is reverse inclusion. Um, that suggestion also came from the parent member on our community. Um, and the reason I wanted this slide to be our last slide is because this is an example of how we do reverse inclusion here in the district. So this is our unified Bachi team. You heard us celebrating them um, a little while back. Um, but essentially, the premise behind the unified Bachi team is that typically developing students, or what you would know as regular education students, join a team with our special education students. Um, and they work together toward a common goal, in this case, winning Bachi matches. But the idea around reverse inclusion is that students that are typical have the opportunity to go to settings where the special education students are participating in and participate with them. Bachi is a great example of that, but I want to have more examples to share regarding reverse inclusion with you because I think it's a great idea and I think it's something that we haven't done enough of here in Exeter. And it's a great way, again, to build rela- And it's a great way, again, to build relationships and to connect that continuum between regular education and special education. So that is our summary of our special education plan that's being submitted to the state. And we are going to be submitting it in May, so it is on the, uh, voting agenda for the eighteenth. Um, and I'll open it up to any questions that you might have. Or if you just want to congratulate the Bachi team one more time.
Thanks, Dawn. I, you know, I think that's, you know, uh, obviously, you know, a report like this just highlights how complicated special education can be and how much work goes into it. Uh, one of the questions I had was, um, you know, you mentioned about the percentage of students identified in Exeter exceeds the state averages. Is, is that ever listed as a, um, let's say, an area in need of improvement, uh, in, in these sort of things? And, and is Exeter's, uh, percentage, uh, significant in any way?
It is if it's significant over a period of time. So most of the time with a lot of these corrective actions, it's not looking at one-year data. It's looking at multiple years of data. So for example, the cyclical monitoring was conducted in a twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. That monitoring was looking at the past three to five years of data prior to that. So if there's a trend in that data over those years where you are significantly over the state average, then yes, you would get flagged for significant disproportion, disproportionality for identification. Um, right now, I anticipated this question, so I pulled our numbers. Um, our child count this year, our LEA percentage of special education was twenty-one point five percent and the state is eighteen point six. So we are significantly, um, over for this, uh, school year. And, um, as I've mentioned before, uh, particularly when we've talked around academic data, um, our specific learning disability population is significantly overrepresented in those numbers. You've heard us talk a lot about MTSS and our intervention process, all that stuff that happens before a child gets referred for special education. And that percentage right there is the reason we need to do all of that work in that intervention process because we are over-identified. So that tells me that we're having a problem with core intervention and the steps that happen, core intervention and the steps that happen in between there. Um, the good news is we have a plan for remediating that and Dr. Haller's addressed that, um, in, in detail. Um, unfortunately, it takes a little bit of time to see the results of that plan because you can't, if a student is demonstrating need over a period of time, you can't just not refer them for special education. That would create some other issues for us. Um, so when we have students who aren't demonstrating response to intervention over a significant period of time, we do have an obligation to do a special education evaluation. Um, but that's how all of this connects when you talk about complicated. The, the danger and the, and the struggle that I often see districts have is when they separate regular education and special education and don't acknowledge that it's all in the same continuum and it's all in the same pod and it all has to be connected. And that's the work that we're really trying to do here is to connect all those pieces for kiddos. Other questions?
Using my handy little calculator, I took twenty-one percent of the forty-six hundred people and that ends up with nine hundred people. In your, no more than nine hundred, actually.
It's eight hundred and thirty-five because when they did the count, our total enrollment was thirty-eight eighty-nine.
Okay. In your presentation, you mentioned how someone has to monitor the adherence of the classroom teachers to the IUPs and how you have to monitor the students advancement through those. How many people do we have to monitor? Those eight hundred and fifty people?
That's all of your special education staff. So I don't have a count right off the top of my head. I'd have to count them up for you. But that's all of your special education teachers who monitor those plans. And then in addition to that, the other layers of that are your building administrators who help to monitor that because they most often serve as the facilitator or the LEA representative for IEP meetings. And then we have three special education supervisors who help with that as well.
Well, I'd be interested in that number because if,
I can add them up for you.
If I has, as a special education instructor, have forty kids that I have to monitor or IUP and their classroom interaction with every, uh, class teacher that they participate in, I don't have enough time.
I hear you.
My, my function is about not being accomplished in the best way it can.
I hear you. Uh, special education teachers are amazing people. Um, I know the work that they have to do and the work that is expected of them because their jobs are as much about teaching as they are, as you just said, about compliance and regulation. Um, that is the really big difference between regular education and special education is there is that extra added expectation of all these compliance requirements by the state and the heavy sort of monitoring and auditing that goes on with that. The state actually has established caseload maximums, um, as a way of helping to manage that, Mr. Quinter. So, um, one of the questions I've often gotten is, geez, that special education teacher only has five students on their caseload and the other special education teacher has thirty students on their caseload. Why is that? Well, the state has mandated maximums based on types of need. So for example, um, uh, what we call an MDS caseload or a multiple disability support caseload. Those are students with very complex needs, often students with intellectual disabilities who receive a lot of different related services like occupational therapy and physical therapy and so on and so forth. Those caseload maximums are much lower, most often around eight. Um, in comparison to a teacher who might have an itinerant learning support caseload, um, whereby they are checking in with students on organizational goals and executive functioning goals. So the state does have a mechanism for trying to help manage that and we are required to comply to those maximum caseloads um, or what they refer to as full-time equivalence. That's one of the big things that goes into determining special education staffing. So when we come to you with a special education staffing request, again, as Mr. Morgan said earlier, it's not so much because it's a wish list. It's because, you know, perhaps we have caseload maximums that we have to, uh, abide by from the state.
Well, I, in, in addition to the welfare of the child, we, our liability, if we do not conform with an IEP is extensive.
Correct.
They could sue us into the Stone Age and we could talk about, uh, you know, trying to keep a balanced budget and the whole thing could be blown by one irate parent. So it's absolutely essential that our, we have enough people to accomplish those tasks. Those, I think are the most, now, there's old teachers like me. When you start messing with my curriculum, you start messing with my presentation, you start messing with my classroom discipline, you're treading on hallowed ground. And I will maintain forever that there's some students that just need a two-by-four instead of a, uh, five-minute counseling. But, uh, you know, still, I, I would not deprive you of the assets to, uh, do your thing. And you have to convince those older teachers that, uh, they really ought to retire or maybe talk to me and I'll get them a position for them. Thank you.
You're, you, I, I do understand what you're saying, Mr. Quinter, and I do agree. Um, sometimes it is about educating our staff on what students need as individuals. Um, but again, this is an area where I'll just celebrate regular ed staff in the district. I'll use Lorraine as an example. Um, so you, as you know, we're building our emotional support programming over there. And if I've heard it once, I've heard it a dozen times from the regular ed staff over there that they absolutely will not let those children go anywhere else. They want them in their building and they just want us to train them and teach them and show them how to get better at educating those students. So while I agree, some folks need a little bit more, um, encouragement than others, there are large groups of staff in this district that reflect a desire to support our special education students and our families.
Yes, I, I would just like to say, I appreciate Bob's metaphor, but, uh, I think I speak for everyone. None, none of us here at the table condone hitting anyone with a two-by-four. Just want to speak, speak that. Mrs. Harris.
Mrs. Harris, I have a question, uh, with regards to, um, sorry, increasing our participation, participation rates.
Yeah.
Um, I know it's an area we need to improve in base with reg and special ed. So, um, are there specific reasons parents don't allow their children to participate, whether it's special or regular ed? Um, and how can we circumvent that? Like, what conversations can be had?
I appreciate that question because I do think some of that conversation comes from, from all of you as well in terms of community education and advocacy. So, uh, to give you a point of perspective about participation rate, um, so I'm gonna do this off the top of my head, but in our special education compliance, our rates of participation on PSSAs and keystones, because eleventh grade was included in there, um, vary from thirty-five percent to sixty-five percent based on what that test was. The expected target is ninety-five percent. And in most of those areas, that thirty-five to sixty-five percent, we were pretty significantly below the state average. So that does tell me it's an Exeter thing specifically that we need to address um, around our philosophy, around students participating in state assessments. And I think one of the struggles for students, and it's always been the conversation since I've been in education, for students with special needs, is that those assessments are given at a level, an instructional level that perhaps those students are not currently working on. And so the fear is always frustration for those students and, you know, affecting their confidence and affecting, you know, the way they think about themselves as a learner. But I do believe wholeheartedly, having been a special education teacher in grade levels that were assessed, a lot of that is on us in about how we talk to our students about growth and about monitoring. I believe strongly that one of the things we need to do with our special education students is to get them more involved in their own progress monitoring. So for example, if a student is working on a reading fluency goal, it shouldn't just be the teacher recording the number of words correct each time they practice. The student should have their own graph and they should be recording that and they should be analyzing their errors and celebrating their successes. And it's little changes like that that build up momentum to a student feeling more confident about going in and taking what is perceived as a challenging assessment. Um, the other thing I think it's important for families to know is, you know, if a child fatigues during one of those assessments, we don't force the issue, right? If a student truly is struggling in one of those assessments, there's no educator that says, that's tough kiddo, you've just got to sit here and finish it. We make all the accommodations that we can. We provide all the supports that we can. And if a student needs to tap out at some point, we allow that to happen because ultimately we don't want a student walking away feeling like that was the worst experience of their life. Um, it's those kinds of conversations that I think we need to have more of. And that awareness that all assessment is important because all of the assessments that we're doing give a slightly different vantage point on the progress of the child. Uh, we talked about that too, in the larger scheme of things, that we wanted to build in more diagnostic and prescriptive assessments into what we're doing, particularly in the intervention levels. Because we need to stop walking away from assessment and embrace it and understand that it helps us make good decisions about our instructional strategies and about what our students are learning. So the more we can promote those kinds of conversations and do small strategies like I described to help our students feel confident in looking at their own data, um, I think we'll be able to make some progress in that area. But it is the area, like I said, I'm, we're further ahead on some of these things in the plan than others and that's an area that we're not so far along in yet.
And just to clarify, um, when we're talking special ed, does that also include our five oh four students?
No, it does not.
So are they grouped into the regular ed assessment?
They're in the regular education pot of data.
So our special ed, they are measured by PDE the same way our s- regular ed students are. And are they both expected to reach that ninety-five percent?
Yes.
Okay, so if,
There's no different, uh,
So for example, if you have a fourth grader taking the PSSAs this year, but their IEP has them at a first grade level.
Mm-hmm.
So they're measured at the grade level they're physically in versus,
Correct.
their mentality level, correct?
And that's, that's where that worry and that worry about frustration comes in because obviously they're working at a different level instructionally every day than what they're being assessed on. Again, understanding that that assessment is one piece of data and reflects how that student is doing in comparison to that particular grade level, knowing that we're also collecting other points of data through that thing I called progress monitoring earlier, um, that are also a piece of that information about that student.
Okay, so just a follow-up question. So they're expected to be part of that ninety-five percent. Yet if they don't perform and let's say, you know, they are, they don't complete the assessment,
Mm-hmm.
for whatever reason, then their score is also reflected in the overall score of the score.
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a, not saying it's a double whammy, but it, it, in reality, it really is because
It really is.
the assessment isn't really geared towards special education children.
Correct.
And that's a fault of the PDE.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Um, the other piece of that, just make it even more complicated, um, is there's an alternate assessment that students with special needs are eligible to take called the PASA. But there are very specific criteria that students must meet in order to take the PASA. And it is, um, very highly focused on intellectual ability. So it is typically our students who, well, we would be see participating in our multiple disabilities programs and our life skills programs, uh, who would be eligible for the PASA. So all of our other special education students, our other types of support, our other disabilities are, uh, typically participating in the standard PSSA assessment. Other questions? Mr. Quinter?
A, a numbers question that is, uh, ultimately a human question. Do, do we understand why our numbers are where they are? We're what, three percentage points above the state average?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know why?
Mm-hmm. I believe, I believe it goes directly back to our over-identification of specific learning disability. And I believe that's a direct result of the work that we need to do on our core curriculum and those intervention levels.
So just to clarify, we're, we're identifying too many?
Yes.
So if we get better at identifying them more accurately,
Not just identifying them more accurately, it's, it accurately, it's more about providing solid core instruction and appropriate targeted interventions in that pre-referral process. There was a bent toward doing a one-size-fits-all, uh, over the past few years here in terms of the intervention process. And, um, that is not typically what you would do with an intervention process. Typically within an intervention process, pre-referral, you, your intervention strategy would match the student need. So for example, if a student has a reading fluency problem, you would provide an intervention that addresses reading fluency, not reading vocabulary. So we need to get better at sort of diagnosing what the more specific need is in that intervention process and then providing resources and strategies to address that. Our reading team is bursting at the seams and ready to go with that and are full proponents of that philosophy. They just need our support and the support of the teaching and learning department in order to make that happen.
And is there a, is there a grade or a clump of grades where this becomes more evident? Or is this across the whole K to twelve spectrum?
So initial identifications are happening pretty much across the whole spectrum here. Um, but where we typically see a burst of initial identifications is between second and third grade. And that goes back to all those literacy conversations. And I'm sure that's like a, you know, a spark for you because I know that you're heavily in tune to those conversations around literacy and around our third grade benchmark. Um, I respect our third grade goal in our comprehensive plan for proficiency, but Dr. Haller and I are like-minded in that we believe the real goal is in first grade because that's where students learn basic decoding skills. And that's where the foundation needs to be laid. And so my markers are kids that are in first grade who require intervention and are at risk. And much like I talked about how I'd like to see our at-risk process. And much like I talked about how I'd like to see our at-risk process and framework move down to eighth grade, Dr. Heller and I would like to see our focus on intervention and that early intervening process start early in first grade.
Thank you.
And I know that I've mentioned in the last month, there are school districts in the county of Berks who do not particularly want to extend themselves in the special education area. And I know this is blasphemy, but it's a fact. And there's some school districts who if I am a parent coming in looking for a place to live and I do my due process, I want to go here, I want to go there. And there are people who orient new people will say, "Well, Exeter's got a great special ed program. You ought to go there." And I have had clients ask me about our special ed program before I even told them I was going to school board. So as blasphemous as the day sound, there's people out there that don't want them. Not that they have any use for them, but they'd rather somebody else handle the problem. And that's, we've been on the receiving end of that. Much to our credit, and I applaud it.
When I worked at Wilson, one of the experiences that we had over there was that we were actually over identified in the area of autism, but it wasn't because we were inappropriately identifying kids with autism. It's because of what Mr. Quinter just said. So the realtors over there, when families will be looking for homes, if they had children with autism, realtors would recommend their program. So, you know, I would love for our programs to be programs that realtors want to boast about and tell families how wonderful they are.
Don't, not to extend the conversation too much further, but you know, just on the issue of special, of specific learning disability, does the state still allow districts to consider different models for identification? Like, I know we probably use something akin to the discrepancy model. Which, you know, I think the alternative to that is something that may be based more upon students' response to intervention.
Correct.
And I wonder if we've considered that as a possible... Because as a former school psychologist, I'll say that, you know, the discrepancy models was really fraught with, you know, several kind of procedural and philosophical kind of problems. And, you know, I think, you know, sometimes you can look at that and you could actually, you could actually manipulate your special education population based upon the model and the discrepancy that you actually establish as being significant.
Agreed.
So I don't know, we done anything in that area?
So there are, just to, because you and I are speaking one language, I want to make sure that everybody else is on the same page as we are. There's two different models for being able to identify students in need of special education services in the state of Pennsylvania. One's called the discrepancy model, which is the model that we use and the other is called the RTI model and that's the model that Dr. Hamburger is talking about as an alternative. The discrepancy model uses a formula to sort of determine whether or not there's a discrepancy between cognitive ability and academic achievement in certain areas and that's how a student is identified as having a specific learning disability. In the RTI model, it's much more about assessing the interventions that have been provided and the progress in those interventions. To give you perspective, in the state of Pennsylvania, I think there's only about seven schools in the state of Pennsylvania that were approved to use the RTI model. That's not school districts, folks. I didn't say seven school districts, I mean seven schools. So here, three of our elementary schools would count toward that count of seven. That's how difficult it is to get approved for that model of identification. So I've never gone down that road. And I do believe that we have some work to do here around our core curriculum and our interventions before we explore something like that.
Just a question on the identification, and you said you want to target first grade. Typically, if the identification is made within that first or second year, what is the process? Like, how long does it take from the identification in order to get them into an IEP or a five oh four?
When I say identification in first grade, I don't mean for special education. I mean for those pre-referral interventions. I would actually very much discourage identifications, particularly in the area of specific learning disabilities at those lower grade levels because as we know with kiddos that young, their rates of development are all over the place. And so it's more about providing responsive intervention and seeing if they respond to that before we make any further decisions.
Okay, thank you for that question.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Mrs. Harris?
Mr. Fiddler's cutting me off now.
No, not at all, please. You're already well over the twenty-five.
I know, I know, I know. I owe you another apology.
I just want to say, great presentation, thank you. Very thorough and made me understand it very well, thank you.
The plan is very long because it is a compliance report. So if you do have any questions and you want to ask them at the voting meeting, please feel free to do so.
Thank you very much. And we will be moving this item, item D, to the agenda for the voting meeting. Item E is another item which will move forward. Well, it doesn't actually say motion here, but it is a settlement agreement. I'm assuming the board has to approve this. Yeah, I see a lot of heads nodding. It's a settlement agreement between parents individually on their own behalf and on behalf of their minor child as proposed and further authorizes the board president and board secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district. So that also will move ahead to the next meeting. And the last item, the last item to move ahead is recommended that the board of school directors approve the attached addendum to the Blended Learning Services Agreement with VLN Partners LLP. My only question is the term blended learning services. Could somebody enlighten me on that?
So that is the program that we use for our cyber school. It's one of the programs. So Exeter has its own cyber school. And then we also have a blended program, supported cyber. And this is part of the program that we use. It's part of that process, it's part of that, it's a contract.
And it looks like from the attachment that some of this is going to go away, so maybe...
Mrs. Leonard, would you like to...
There's a backstory here.
Would you like to come up and speak to this? I believe you're responsible for the decrease. Gotcha. Listen, when you do something great, I'm going to ask you to come up and talk about it.
We use the VLN in the supported cyber classroom and it's a mix. It's some for original credit and it's also some for credit recovery. So that's what we use it for. And for the last three years, we were contracting at this really high rate. I think it was like seventeen thousand that we were contracting at, but we weren't using half of it. We were only using fifty seats for credit recovery and original credits. And we were using Pearson for a lot of other things. That's our other cyber program that we use. But we weren't using any of the add-ons that went with this. And so when Dan Wilczek came to me and said, "What do we need to continue with this?" I said, "Well, I'd like to cut it in half so that we can at least just have the fifty seats." And so I just called and I said I didn't want it. I didn't want it and that I wanted just half of it and could you just give me half? And, or we weren't going to take it. And we weren't really not going to take it, but they believed me and so we cut it in half.
Cutting in half is certainly, you're speaking our language.
Well, we weren't using it, yeah.
I want to be sure we weren't going to lose any services.
No, we are not. Nope, none at all.
Thank you very much.
As you can see, Mrs. Leonard is one of our chief contract negotiators for the district.
When we look at textbook shipping costs next year...
We'll call Mrs. Leonard.
Can we please ask her for her help?
Have her negotiate those as well.
I just have a point of order. Good job, by the way, not in reference to this, but in the future, when we have addendums, can we attach the original contract with that? Because number three refers, it defaults us back to the previous contract. So it would just be helpful to have both the original contract and the addendum in the attachments. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Hearing, that concludes the education committee report. So all of the items except item B as in boy will move ahead to the voting meeting.
Thank you very much. Finance, Facilities and Audit Committee, Mr. Mall.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. First up on item A, this will be a recommendation for the board to approve the disposal of senior high school math books that are no longer used. Any discussion? Okay. Moving on to item B, this is the BCTC twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget for their general fund proposed operating budget. Any discussion on this one?
I just have a question. Do we know what the decrease was from last year to this year because they're taking out their bus services?
Total, yeah, total decrease for, at least for Exeter that... So last year it was one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine. This year, obviously, one million, seventy-seven thousand, forty-four dollars. So the difference is forty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. Decrease that we're seeing this year. However, I would like to ask Mr. Feike, what, I guess what ramifications are we going to see now that with this new budget year, they're not providing the transportation?
And I just want to point a clarification.
Oh, sorry.
In their budget summary, it does indicate that they decreased their budget by one point six million or eighty-eight percent in the transportation section. So just wanted to know like what percentage did they allocate any further? What the percentages were per district or...
Yeah, it's based on the enrollment per district, so this is our proportion. We estimate it'd be about four buses that have to run is in our transportation budget for this coming year. But in the meantime, we're also looking at the IU is talking about offering the transportation services and combining different schools. And I did talk to our high school principal who had no problem with, you know, if our kids were in with antedote kids that went over to the BCTC. So I'm hoping it'll be less expensive than us doing it if we go through the IU. Plus, you know, with the shortage of drivers, they seem to not have a problem with bus drivers as we do right now.
Yeah, do we have any idea yet of costs from the IU of what that is?
Now they're making sure they have enough people that they can, or enough schools that want to do it that would be beneficial for them. They don't want to have half-full buses.
Okay, any...
By May, I should have that number.
Any personal opinion on if you think that's going to be over or under forty-two thousand dollars?
Well, I was figuring it's going to be about a hundred and ten thousand in our budget, so I'm hoping it's not going to be a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay, so we're, they're reducing their budget, but we're increasing ours.
Oh, yeah, because they also had other increases, you know, they did take the transportation out, but they still had salary increases. They get the average of their sending district salaries, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
I just noticed that, you know, I think our three-year average is a hundred and seventeen. Is that like full-time equivalent or is that, are these kids full-time there? Or are they half-time just for the, you know, the shop programs that they participate in? Or is there a combination?
I'll let Tom answer that because I'm going to play a count on this one.
Those students are all part-time. They are getting their, half of their day at the high school and then the other half is over at BCTC. There's a split between those students who attend BCTC in the morning. That's a much smaller number, although that's a little larger next year than it traditionally is. Majority, I'd say about eighty percent are going to be over at BCTC in the afternoon.
So there's no academic component to the BCTC programs?
They're not a comprehensive CTC, so students are getting their other graduation requirements. Their English, math, social studies, science and P Es back at the high school.
Is that for special ed students as well?
Yes, it is.
Of the one seventeen, is that, they're listed here, does that include special education or is this just regular ed students?
No, that's all of our students there. And that number has been pretty steady, around one-twenty through the years. But that's both reg ed and special ed.
Do they charge extra for special education students or is it all sort of a flat rate?
I don't know the tuition structure or how that agreement is with the J O C.
Yeah, the only thing it doesn't include is we have a ninth grade program, which is what, early admissions program, which isn't that much, but it doesn't include that portion. There's how many kids that participate in that ninth grade. It's more like a sampling.
It is a small number. I do believe that the number that we have is inclusive of the early admissions.
Also worth mentioning that it's not just trade and shop, correct? You know, it's also business, allied health, marketing.
Yeah, it's a very wide program. They have thirty-six programs across the two campuses. That, yes, you're correct, that encompass more than just traditional trades.
And we have students attending west and east.
Correct. We have kids going to both east and west.
Yes, we do. Most of our students attend east, but we do have some that, west. That's largely determined by BCTC based on their enrollment numbers from their sixteen sending schools. Some of their programs only exist in one of the two campuses as well. But where possible, they do try to put our students at Ole because it is a little closer.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other discussion on item B? Okay, moving on to item C, this is the recommendation to approve the safety and security purchase using the capital reserve account for the amount of two hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All right. Dr. Hearing, that is it for my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Personnel committee, Mrs. Schaefer.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. So now we are adding three additional discussions to the personnel committee. Number one is contracted staff, an appointment for Judy Klein to extend her services with us for additional seventeen days. Any discussion?
I have a question. Talking with people in the community, somebody asked me, "What has she been doing?" And I said, "I really don't know." Is there any way that we could either maybe have a report from her or perhaps a presentation at the voting meeting, kind of summarizing what she's been doing so far, but also what we intend her to do in these next seventeen days?
Sure. I had added that up to seventeen days only because we know that Josh White will most likely be held up to the full sixty days by the IU because of his responsibilities. Hopefully a little bit less, but they can hold him up to sixty days. Julie has not used all of her eight days yet. I just wanted to have it on the next, for the voting meeting, just in case, like I said, Josh got held. What she's been focusing on right now is our induction program. That's something that we're required to offer all of our new employees. And there are new requirements for induction that's coming through chapter forty-nine, which is also the chapter that Dawn referenced, that is that structured literacy course that all the, that staff are going to have to take, a certain group of staff are going to have to take. So just organizing all of the induction paperwork from the last year and preparing all those checklists has taken a substantial amount of time because it was also sending out communication to all the mentors, making sure that everyone is getting paid. It was labor intensive. It took a number of days. The other thing that she's been working on is helping to support our reading team. When I was talking about the budget and one of the two positions that we weren't going to fill, there was a second one that we do need to fill. That's the reading supervisor position, which is the position that Julie held previously to retiring. When the person who was in that position left earlier this year, we were... we were unsure as to what teaching and learning would look like. We wanted to have the opportunity to perhaps restructure it. And we wanted to take our time with that position. And we believe that that position is is in desperate need. So Julie has been working with the reading team, helping provide guidance with that, going through the materials that we've ordered and at the intervention, which is one of the things that why we're over identified. So she's spending a great deal of time with that, too. So I I she has definitely not used the all the eight days yet. But like I said, in anticipation of of Dr. Hoyt being held and knowing that federal programs is coming up, she's also been in contact with the IU because all of that work needs to be done with completing those grant applications and Julie had done that in the past. So I'm going to need help with that because that's not something I've I've worked through. And again, it's they're all, this is this couple of these items takes hours to complete. It's not like a check off. It just, like I said, it's just some amount of paperwork to go through and making sure that we're in compliance with things.
Thank you very much.
How many hours a day does she put in?
She puts in a full day's work.
Okay, thank you.
But that's only when when it's needed, correct?
Only when it's needed. Yep, so I.
And according to my math from our previous teaching and learning director, you know, based on salary plus benefits, this is a cost savings to the district that we're not paying right now to this person. And it's allowing you and other administrators to go back to your normal workflows with your own agendas.
I I appreciate you saying that. Yes, you know, with Dr. Flam's retirement, we're not paying his salary. He's retired. And Julie is is taking over those responsibilities. So we've we've been down one person in that department all year and and working to manage that. And now we're down, we're down two people in that department. And it was it was challenging when it was one, but again, we wanted to take our time, make sure we were doing the right thing. By not filling position or filling the position we didn't, we wanted to be really thoughtful about that, that those two administrative positions and what that would look like for the district. But now with us being down two people, knowing that Dr. Hoyt probably won't be able to start till June and the work that's coming up, it would be very challenging to to cover all both positions at this point.
Is seventeen days enough?
I I I feel like doing it incrementally is the most appropriate way to do it. And, you know, because Dr. Hoyt will be on board. And if if it appears though we need more time, then I will put it back on the the voting meeting. So anybody has an opportunity to ask questions about it or get an update just like what was done and so you know exactly what we're doing with the time. But thank you for asking that.
Okay, on to item B, which is retirement smooth from the voting meeting for A and B. Any discussion?
Second. Sorry, that was a joke.
All in favor? Up for discussion again will be item D, move from the voting meeting, change of status, item A. Any discussion? And then item E, move from the voting meeting for leave of absence. Any discussion? That's it for my report, Dr. Hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Next, Dr. Hearing, just one policy revision on the proposed for the agenda for first reading. It's policy two hundred, enrollment of students. From what I can tell, some fairly simple language changes required through Act One, but I know Mrs. Harris has some additional statements and comments that she wants to make about this policy and why it's necessary to update at this time.
So I mentioned earlier, when Mr. Mall was asking about how a student is considered homeless or under McKinney-Vento status. And I mentioned that later when we're talking about policy, I talked a little bit more about some of the requirements and that concept of educational instability. The update to the policy itself is simple in that it is just the inclusion of that language, educational instability. That language comes from Act One of twenty twenty-two. And it is a broader use of that language around students who have experienced one or more school changes within a school year as a result of some significant factors such as homelessness, placement in foster care, court-appointed placements, or because they are adjudicated youth. So for the purpose of this policy, it's just the inclusion of that new descriptor, educational instability. But as Ms. Montane referenced earlier as well, along with that, in Act One, come a whole lot of mandates and requirements around what districts are expected to provide for students who are experiencing educational instability, including things like the mandate to develop a graduation plan when a student moves in who's experienced educational instability. A mandate around waiving certain requirements as they relate to education if they are deemed a barrier to that student graduating successfully. And and those barriers created by the changes in schools related to the educational instability. It also requires us to appoint a lead person or contact person in the district for students who are experiencing educational instability. Here at Exeter, we have have a little bit of a leg up on that in that Ashley Reinhardt, who is our school social worker, has already been serving in that role. She's been our point of contact for homeless families, but also our point of contact for foster care families. And she's been working with our students who are also adjudicated youth. But now districts are mandated to do a lot of those things that we've already been doing here as best practice, and now they are requirements.
What grade levels is is that run through? Through K through twelve? So if you have a student with educational instability in third grade, you need to make a plan for graduation?
So you don't have to make the graduation plan right in third grade, but you have to have a way of tracking that student so that when they get to the high school, the team knows they have to develop a graduation plan. That's where that point of contact person comes in because part of their responsibility is creating a tracking system for these students. And that point of contact has to literally be put on their record so that when they move, it goes with them and the new person can talk to the old person. And what was I going to say? The yeah, those records have to follow through so that student will keep a a little dot on their record.
That title of educational instability throughout their educational career?
It's possible.
And I and all these things are are great. I mean, we need to support students and we want them to be successful and give them every opportunity. But it goes back to the budget and what we were saying when people ask about these unfunded mandates. You need individuals to to track this. You need individuals to monitor this and it's it's not a like or a want, it's a it's a requirement. And just as Dawn said, we went very, within a year or so, went from sixty students who are identified as as homeless to over a hundred. And we have, you know, we're very fortunate to have Ashley Reinhardt. So these are some of the challenges that school districts face when you look at these these bumps and increases because as as Tim pointed out, it's in benefits and it's in salaries. And we we need the people to do the requirements to monitor the situations and it's it's not, we're not just arbitrarily adding stuff, but we are required to meet these needs. So that was a great question and a very important question to ask.
You know, I think the other part of this policy that I mean, we have to realize why this policy is in place because what it does say that for these kids who are experiencing educational instability, there there used to be a requirement and there still is for kids who normally enroll in a public school to provide certain proof identification, proof of age and residence and immunizations and that sort of thing, sometimes even the records from other school districts. And there was a time when kids would be held out of school you know, because they didn't submit that information. This provision, and I think Act One basically says, if you're in this condition of homelessness, they waive all of those requirements for admission and you immediately enroll that student in public education without, you know, the requirement that we'd normally hold for students enrolling normally in public in public school.
And that was already in place for McKinney-Vento students, for homeless students, but again, the inclusion of this language of students experiencing educational instability broadens that category of students for whom those requirements would be expedited.
Are there any other questions about the policy?
I do. Just with regards to school age, we're we're defining it, but we're not specifying what the district's kindergarten program like age start is, even though our fourteen does in Article thirteen. So it's six, but we're not defining that under school age. Just want to make sure we should or should not be.
Yep, that is in a different policy. Of course, I've just logged out of Board Docs for them. It's in it's in your two hundreds.
Okay, yeah, I know it's in, I know it's in different policy, but when you're looking at a policy like
No, it doesn't.
You don't have to put it in.
It does have a, I mean, it it has a reference to the
It does, yes.
The the school code, which specifies the the age, six to twenty-one, so if that's acceptable.
Yeah, it's it's definitions of this policy right here under school age.
Mrs. Schaefer was mentioning that it didn't include age six. That that was the problem with the definition.
Oh, it just early submit age of admission.
Yeah.
Then policy two oh one addresses age of admission.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Hearing, that's all for the policy portion.
Thank you very much. Next would be public comment, but no one signed up. So we're going to be moving the following items to our April eighteen voting agenda. Meeting minutes, item five A, C, D, E, F. Item six A, B, C. Item seven A. It'll also include retirements, change of status and leave of absence. And item eight A. I believe that's all of them. Okay, at this point, are there any board members that would like to be heard?
Yes, ma'am. Thursday night is the public meeting, town hall meeting, or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, next next Thursday, just to clarify, April thirteenth.
On the apartments complex. And I would rather we as a board had a canned answer. But rather than keep everyone here tonight to to argue our position as a board, I would just like to recommend that anyone who makes a statement at that meeting identify that you're speaking as an individual rather than on the basis of board's opinion. I quite frankly feel it's a good thing because it means money. It means additional property taxes, it means transfer taxes. It and the zoning in Exeter Township is designed to prevent any development. That's one of the few, I fact, I even looked at that plot of land for a potential bus barn at a time at one time. But you know, it's, I don't really the administration can try to convince me that we couldn't accommodate any additional children that came out there. And what you have to realize is, what is it, hundred and sixty apartments?
Two hundred and sixteen units.
You don't build two hundred and sixteen units in twenty days. It takes time to build anything of that size. So you're not going to get hit with a big influx of people because they gotta build them, then they have to let them out. And all that time, they're spending money and sending it to us. And if you really wanted reduce taxes or keep them, taxation development is the key, not some of the other things we've talked about. But so that's my request there on the apartments. If we want to discuss it later on, that's fine. I'm not going to keep everybody here tonight. And I would like also like to request that we schedule a review of our security in the buildings sometime in the near future considering the occurrences of the national and other places.
Sure. And Mr. Quinter, just to kind of piggyback off of your your statement about the two hundred and sixteen units of Lorraine Nursery Apartments. The the one thing I reiterate, the school board as a whole has not made put out a position on where we are with that. I, as you recall, I have sent enrollment numbers as well as capacity numbers to the supervisors, the board of supervisors, the township. And I did also request if they could get clarification from the developer on where they were getting the estimates for the child counts. The estimate they they were providing was, I believe, thirteen children out of two hundred and sixteen units. Personally, I'm rather skeptical of that number. And that that's really the only thing, I think, from from our end that that's been requested, just to see if we could understand where that data is coming from.
The folks who do these professional enrollment projections basically calculate those numbers on the type of residence that's being proposed. And oftentimes, for apartments, my recollection is it was somewhere around point eight per.
It was point zero eight was the was the formula.
So so I think, you know, when I do that calculation, I'm coming up a little higher than that, but not much. So it's.
They, yeah, sorry, it was eighteen just by going off of point oh eight times two sixteen, but they actually in in the latest information that they provided, it was, I think it was like point oh five for the one bedrooms and another two bedrooms. So that's probably why that comes out a little bit lower.
And I think to think about two is, I mean, that's that's distributed K to twelve, K to twelve as well.
Correct.
It's not, so it's not all going to impact on, let's say, one elementary school.
Yep.
That's the distribution that you might see of those individuals, you know, on average. I mean, obviously, it's going to come out differently, but.
There there was one particular statement that kind of struck a chord with me in the Planning Commission where it was representative for the project had brought up one of their apartment complexes that was positioned very close to an elementary school, and I believe it was in the Wilson School District. The the reference that was made was saying that that complex had quoted ton of kids. So that kind of raised some raised some alarm bells just to, you know, this this complex would be very close to Lorraine Elementary. Obviously, not walkable by by any ease. But driving wise, especially if they get that other access route going off on Lorraine Road, it's fairly close to that ele- elementary school. So there could be some attractiveness for people with elementary aged children to move into those apartments. So something, so they'd be aware of.
Anyone else? I do want to quickly say that, just so the community knows that although we can't share specifics to what we do security-wise with our buildings and administration, we are constantly reviewing the security of our buildings and we are aware of concerns from parents. And if anyone has any concerns, please call the school district, the administration, and they will talk to you about that. If nothing else, following this meeting, the board will be meeting for an executive session to consult with our solicitor regarding privileged guidance and personnel matters. And our next board meeting will be our Tuesday, April eighteenth voting meeting. And we know of your objections, we're adjourned. Thank you.